Good afternoon and welcome to our regular meeting of the City Council of Rancho Mirage, but also our open house today. I'm glad that so many of you were able to come out and walk around City Hall and see all the people that work for you on a day-to-day basis. Today, we'll be acting as the City Council, but also the Library Board, Housing Authority Board, Community Service District, and we also will represent the Redevelopment Successor Agency. So let's begin by starting with a flag salute led by our Councilman Scott Hines.
Please rise. Please place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, today, we invite you to sit back and enjoy today's meeting. It should be fun for all. So Cindy, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Hines.
Present.
Councilmember Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tems Montrich.
Councilmember Weil.
Here.
And Mayor Kite.
Here. Today, as part of our 40th anniversary celebration, we're spotlighting the early pioneers of Rancho Mirage. A few unique individuals have been selected to represent the many that have contributed to our rich legacy, and I mean many. Unfortunately, we weren't able to honor everybody, but I think the people we have here today, you'll really be excited to hear about. So let me introduce you some of the very special people that are here today. First of all, Joaquin and Sharon Delgado, third-generation Palm Springs Valley restaurateurs. The Delgado family is often credited with starting Restaurant Row in Rancho Mirage. Las Casuelas Nuevas was the first Spanish colonial hacienda restaurant in the country. It has attracted generations of happy diners. Joaquin and Sharon have won every restaurant award that exists. In 2007, Southern California Restaurant Writers Association declared Las Casuelas Nuevas the best Mexican restaurant in Southern California. We knew that all the time, that they were always the best. Please welcome Joaquin and Sharon Delgado. In 1955, eighteen years before the city was incorporated, Duncan Emmons set up shop on Highway 111 in what was to become Rancho Mirage. Vintage racecar driver, hot rod fan, and auto body repair wizard, Duncan Emmons soon became the go-to guy for the stars and all others who needed help getting back in alignment after a fender bender or worse. Duncan Emmons Auto Body was more like a body, auto body repair shop. It was a lifestyle destination for car fans, racers, and collectors. Duncan loved to race vintage cars and was well-known in the circuit as the top driver of all, on all, and also a great guy. Duncan married Dara in 1970 and had one child, Catherine. Scott from Dara's previous marriage was part of the close family. So Dara, Catherine, and Scott, fifty-eight years after Duncan Emmons Auto Body was founded, still run the family business. Perhaps you've enjoyed or benefited from their extraordinary service and calm demeanor after an accident. If so, you've been part of an amazing legacy that included Elizabeth Taylor, Red Skelton, and so many others that recognized Dara Emmons as one of the Valley's great ladies and business leaders. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome Dara Emmons. Vicki Maselli was a teenager living at Thunderbird Country Club with her parents when the city was incorporated in 1973. She remembers with fondness growing up in the desert, the country club lifestyle, birthday parties with children of celebrities, and televised PGA tournaments played at Thunderbird. While volunteering with a television production crew that filmed the golf tournaments at Thunderbird, Vicki got the bug for TV and today is a TV producer and talent agent living in Los Angeles. In 1973, during her senior year at Palm Springs High School, we're both graduates of Palm Springs High School, only I'm a little bit sooner than you, the Chamber of Commerce selected Vicki to be the city's first beauty queen. I'm delighted to introduce Miss Rancho Mirage, 1973 Vicki Maselli. Vicki, do you have your crown on today?
I brought it.
Bobby Thomas started electric car distributors over fifty years ago selling electro caddies while employed at Thunderbird Country Club. Many historians claim that Rancho Mirage is where the golf car was invented. Bobby Thomas was in the vanguard of the golf car business from its very first day. Bobby and his brother Eddie opened up the first golf course, golf car store location in Rancho Mirage. The business blossomed rapidly and grew from two-man operation to a business grossing in a good year up to $50 million and employing a staff of close to 100 employees. Today, electric car distributors sells to hundreds of golf courses, to thousands of personal car users, and to municipalities throughout the region. Please welcome legendary Rancho Mirage businessman Bobby Thomas. It's good to have you with us, Bobby. After nearly forty years of providing valet service at the Rancho Mirage restaurants, Kim Milbrecht is known as the valet to the stars. This man has handed keys by Robert Redford, Ginger Rogers, Kurt Douglas, Josh Hugaboor, President Eisenhower, Arnold Palmer, Jerry Brown, Bob Hope, Frank Sinatra, and many others. His stories could fill a book, and as a matter of fact, he wrote a book called Stars and Cars. And Stars and Cars is the title of Kim's funny and poignant look at celebrities and their automobiles right here in Rancho Mirage. Kim has provided decades of frontline customer service with a smile, making dining in our city just as much or more pleasurable for everyone. Oh, are we on? Okay, there we are. Well, you guys are first today, so I'd like to present the keys to the city of Rancho Mirage, to Joaquin and Sharon Delgado, pioneer business leaders and owners of Las Casuelas Dara, want to come over here? Where's it? Oh, there you are. Like to present this key to the city, to you as pioneer city businessperson and owner of Duncan Emmons Auto Body, and we appreciate you being here and everything you've brought to the city of Rancho Mirage. Vicki, it's nice to see you. No sash today, but where's your crown?
[laughing]
Oh, okay. So Vicki, we'd like to recognize you as the city's first Rancho Mirage, 1973, just a few years back. Bobby, you've been here a long time, and we certainly want to honor you for all the work you've done in Rancho Mirage and what you've made Rancho Mirage over the years. Pioneer businessperson and owner of electric car distributors, we recognize you, Bobby And Kim, last but not least, valet to the stars. And I understand there's probably 100 stories out there you could tell about the cars that you parked. Would you like to spend just a minute and talk about one of those?
Absolutely. I'd like to tell you a little story about one of the most prominent residents ever to live in Rancho Mirage, and that would be Mr. Frank Sinatra. He came into one of the restaurants where one of my employees was working, and at the end of the night, the car was pulled up, and Frank went to get in the car, and he asked my attendant, "What's the largest tip you've ever got?" Well, the young man, very calmly, said, "Well, Mr. Sinatra, one time I got a $100 tip." He goes, "Really?" Frank peels off and gives him $200. Wide-eyed, he looks, "Oh, thank you, sir." Before he gets in the car, Frank stops for a second, "By the way, who was it that gave you the $100 tip?" Without missing a beat, he, very stone-faced, said, "Well, Mr. Sinatra, that was you the last time you were in." Needless to say, Frank never tipped $200 again. But I thought you'd enjoy that story, and I've got, in my book, I've got a lot of fun stories as well. Thank you so much.
Hey, Joaquin, you didn't know it was going to be so formal, you could have worn your leisure suit.
Exactly.
[laughing]
Want to thank all of you who are here today to honor the pioneers of Rancho Mirage, and as I said, there are probably many more out there that we were not able to honor today, but one of these years, we probably will get around to it. So thanks for being here for that portion of our meeting and also for the open house earlier. Want to make a brief comment on one of the final events that we'll be conducting in celebration of our 40th anniversary. A community concert and picnic celebrating the city's 40th anniversary will be held at Whitewater Park in Rancho Mirage on Saturday, November 16th, from 12:30 to 4:00 p.m. The concert will feature a live 90-minute musical performance by popular singer John Stanley King. There'll be free valet parking to make it more convenient for you to get to the park and park there, and also we'll invite all of you to bring your own picnic baskets and blankets and lawn chairs, and I'm told that adult libations will be permitted. I'm not sure of the difference between adult libations and other libations, but they'll be permitted at the park. Prior to the concert, plans for the upcoming and recently approved park expansion will be shared by the City Council members and the Park and Recreation Commissioners. The West End Mission Hills Golf Resort and Spa will be there to provide free treats for all, including complimentary neck massages at the event. The public is invited to this free event, celebrating the city's 40th anniversary. I hope to see you all there. Remember that Saturday, November 16th, at 12:30 at Whitewater Park. Okay, I understand that Councilman Ted Weil has an announcement to make today.
Yes, Mary, would you, would you please join us? While Mary's walking down, again, it's my pleasure to introduce Mary Perry, who's the Deputy Director of Communications and Public Affairs for the Annenberg Retreat at Sunnylands. Mary's going to talk about a movie that will be shown there, The Last Emperor, but I do want to make a comment that we think of Sunnylands as this very exclusive retreat, and indeed it is. But Sunnylands is open to the public, and every Thursday through Sunday, 9:00 to 4:00, it's available at no charge to people that want to see this incredible, incredible estate. And by the way, at the end of the counter, there is a brochure regarding all of the events that are taking place at Sunnylands, and it's just amazing what is available. I encourage all of you to take advantage of it. And Mary, let's hear about one of the other events.
Well, those of you who know me know I really don't need a microphone, but we'll go with the microphone. So thank you, Ted, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, residents of Rancho Mirage. We at Sunnylands absolutely do believe that we are a true part of the Rancho Mirage community and that the events and programs that we have at Sunnylands are there for everyone to take part in. So I am going to talk about the movie next week, but we actually started a new program last Friday that will happen again tomorrow, and that's yoga, yoga on the grounds of Sunnylands. So in that wonderful garden space, in the center of the gardens, we're doing yoga from 12:00 noon till 1:00 p.m., and that will continue every Friday through April. So come on, bring your mats, get comfortable, and come do yoga with us. But you're right, next week, we have another great event. We're going to be having The Last Emperor. That will be a movie out on the Great Lawn on Wednesday night. It will start at 6:00 p.m. So I want you to know, if you have your calendar guide, it says 7:00, but it's actually going to be at 6:00. And that's because when we had our October film, Mr. Smith Goes to Washington, we realized that it was a little nippy out there as we sat outside, so we are going to move the time to 6:00. The gates will open at 5:30. Bring a picnic, bring your chair, bring your blanket. We're going to have heaters out there, so we'll try and make it a little bit warmer. I know I'm bringing a big blanket, so we'll try and stay nice and comfy. So those are a couple of the things that are happening in the immediate future. You know that we have tours of the house and the estate that happen Thursday through Sunday. Those are reservation-only, and we are definitely back to our season of having tickets sold within, well, probably less than an hour. So the tickets will go on sale. The next release of tickets will be November 15th. Those will be for December 1st through the 15th of December. I think I got that right. We also have added landscape tours and bird-watching tours. Those are also on our website, so I encourage you to either check out the brochure, take one home, or go out to our website. And we'll begin our even more full schedule of events in January, when we'll be starting our third Sunday events, our lectures at the library, our nightlife presentations, so all kinds of fabulous things going on, the public side of Sunnylands. But of course, our main purpose are our retreats, and I do want to tell you that we are very busy with retreats. We actually have one going on right now. Most of those we can't speak about until after the retreat takes place. So we've had several already in these last few months. There are, of course, more to come, and that's what, that's what the rest of the world wants to hear about from Sunnylands, but I think those of us who live here are actually, we're very proud of what happens at Sunnylands on the retreat side, but I think we also are really enjoying the fun times that we're having there. So I look for all of you tomorrow for yoga. I look for you on Wednesday at the film, and please don't ever hesitate to call me. Every single person up there has my phone number, and most of the people back here do too. So if you ever have any questions and you're looking for information or assistance, please call me first. I'm more than happy to take all of those calls. And again, congratulations to Rancho Mirage on the 40th anniversary. Pretty darn exciting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you for being here. You can tell us who's there today at the retreat, can't you? We won't tell anybody.
I'll whisper it in your ear later.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, next on the agenda is an update on the Ritz-Carlton, and that means that John Hicks, the project manager, is here to bring us up to date as we get closer and closer to that day that we will all be able to go up and see the hotel. John, good to see you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. Well, I mean, as you've probably heard from a couple of members of staff, we actually have kicked up the schedule to, it's getting more aggressive. One, the Ritz-Carlton staff has gone from roughly 18 executive members to 24. So their staff continues to grow and are on par with the March 1st opening. Second, the general construction staff has exploded to 167, if I count the entire concrete crew. I've actually included some photographs to kind of give you a peek into what's going on in the last, if you can imagine, the last three weeks. I think for those members of council who were there last, you found yourself still walking across some of the native soil, we'll say, and rock that is prominent throughout the site. As of today, you would be able to walk a complete circle between, starting from the lobby, go all the way through the main pool area, out past the Edge Restaurant, around the events lawn, and get all the way up to the spa and spa suites without your feet so much as touching one speck of dirt. All that concrete has been poured. If we can look at the photographs, I show you this photo. It's not very interesting, but what we're doing is actually moving in now in addition to the guest suites furniture. This is our back-of-house office furniture that'll accommodate all the administrative areas, housekeeping, so on and so on. So that is our fifth truck of back-of-house furniture. You can just go ahead and go through them. I'll just talk about random ones. What you're doing is the entrance of the lobby. We're at a point now where we have punch list items available. That is a teak artifacts and accessory shelf that's going to be installed. It is fully illuminated. The stone wall has been completed for the lobby. As you transition around, you can see the last thing that we have left to install is the, electricians are putting the final touches on the lighting that is a part of the registration desk, and it will be ready to incorporate a honey-gold onyx, which just popped up on the photograph. That will be fully blacklight in this beautiful amber hue from the front desk when you walk in. I took this photo. This is your journey as you progress into the three-meal restaurant. For those of you who walked out there, that used to be plywood and a combination of plastic and all sorts of other materials covering up. Our display kitchen, three-meal restaurant, we're moving in the banquets. Audio system has been installed. All the lighting is complete. We're doing final punch on the ceilings and waiting for the booths to come in. That's a glimpse of the three-meal restaurant. There's a lounge area, and that'll be the chiseled stone fireplace. The hearth and mantle will be composed of green onyx. And then now we start walking outside, probably one of the, it's probably taking the most leaps and bounds. You're looking at our infinity-edge reflection pool, and I have contractors out there currently completing the black polished marble on the interior and the slate on the exterior that will receive the water. That last photo you were looking at is, gives you a glimpse, that is our first custom-made guardrail that comes off the terrace deck between what we refer to as now not longer Wing B, but the Spring Wing, and that's the wing that you guys would look up as you're coming up, Frank Sinatra, just before you enter the hotel. That is referred to as, that'll be referred to as the Spring Wing of the property. That guardrail looks into there from the terrace deck. The travertine stone that we've been placing for the last several weeks is actually 99% complete for the exterior. This is one of the meeting rooms that I've never really toured anybody in, but off the terrace deck, there, on the side of the ballroom, there's a small terrace. They're now finishing the final electrical and mechanical diffusers. We have the wood floor down. The, all the millwork has been installed, and it is waiting for wall finishes. Our pre-function area leading to the ballroom has had the, all the millwork has been painted, and it's ready for final wall finish from the base to the crown, and then final electrical fixtures are being placed for the pre-function area itself, and we have a wall fabric that is going to be placed within the next week or two. Pictures we've seen of the ballroom, we're getting ready to do the fabric panels that are going on, and then, so I don't keep boring you guys with all the photographs. Additional landscape, the fencing around the pool area is 90% complete and will be pending powder coating and paint. Right there, I was trying to show a photograph. The first occupants that we have on site is, we have an abundance of hummingbirds. You can't walk through the site without a hummingbird flying by you. He's sitting down in the little right corner. So landscape continues. It's actually 80% complete through the, through the main pool area. What you're looking at here is that for some that took early, early tours of the property is the kids' club. When we took it over, it was a raw space still. We now have put the second coat of primer on and are actually moving the movie chairs out, ready for final paint, and so now we're going to start fixturing that, get the movie screen in so people, kids can go in and watch private movies. There's video game systems that are going in, and a pool table, ping pong, a whole bunch of items will be going in there. And we can just go ahead and fly by those. And this is what I was telling you, around the Edge Restaurant, what you see is landscape is being completed, concrete is being completed all the way around. We actually have our railing going in, the base along the, every pool area. We actually have our railing going in, the base along the, every pool area, as you look over to the view, we have a cantilevered glass rail that'll be installed, so we try to minimize any obstruction to that. What you're looking at is the spa suites. Several of us looked at this from the time it was nothing more than exterior gray drywall. Well, concrete is in front of it. You can actually walk into each one of the first level spa suites with concrete. They're getting ready to put in the imported Camago stone on the deck for the spa suites. The dry stack stone, what you're looking at there is one of the, Guest Suite 109 has a sculpted rock finish that is being incorporated into it where it has a shower, and then there's an exterior hot tub that sticks underneath that trellis. And spa suites, for some of you that took the really early tours, you remember 50% of this drywall had been removed from the previous development group. Well, now you're looking at kitchen cabinets. They're all alder, solid alder cabinets, doors and boxes. Well, we finally started installing them. So we're very excited to actually get through that. Again, additional concrete leading you up to Wing C. And now we're looking at the spa suites. This is the third level of the spa suites that looks back towards the hill. The stack stone is 99% complete. You're actually looking at the decking material that we're going to be used. We swapped out the acid wash colored concrete for natural stone. Private fire pit, private hot tub and shower, so this way they can take a cool, pleasant shower before stepping into their tub. The women's spa, we've completed the stone and tile work. Actually, it's all stone in the women's spa. That is actually the wet sauna that you're looking at. And then the lobby area of the women's spa. We have a combination of white pebble stone, stacked travertine from floor to ceiling, travertine on the floors. The bench that you sit on is actually a white imported stone from Turkey. Can't remember the name right now, but absolutely beautiful to see in person. You're looking at the spa from the lobby. They have started the floor in the lobby. So we got one band, three courses of tile going in, and they expect to have that wrapped up by Monday, actually, believe it or not. Best for last, this is actually, the last several photos are our model rooms. You're looking at what's called a, we refer to as a queen queen model where it's been dressed out for Ritz Carlton approval. This will just give you an idea of what you'll expect to see. Furniture is leather. That little table you see is a solid block of wood that has been sculpted into a side accent table. The headboards are fabric. The media center with television, that same white stone that was imported from Turkey. Again, travertine on the floors, custom artwork in every single one of the guest rooms. It's not photographs. These are actually a series of watercolors that are being incorporated into the room. And this is actually a queen model where you see the bed itself will be flanked by custom lamps that have been, they have a white leather weave off of leather strips to them. Same thing, you can see a lot of natural materials. That's it. As we see it today, we are set, we're in a position of transition where we're starting to turn spaces over and punching, doing a punch block with Ritz Carlton's staff and in preparation for December full turnaround to Ritz Carlton. So work continues. We expect to see no less than 200 employees from here until Christmas.
Who would have thought? I tell you.
I remember sitting in the conference room, our first meeting, saying, yes, we as a developer will complete this project. This project will open.
Looks great. Anybody have any questions of John while he's here? As you know, you can go up on site anytime, and he's more than happy to take you around, show you the progress. The rooms have really come out really beautiful and be a great asset for that hotel. Iris, did you have a comment?
No, I just wanted to comment, and thank you so much for coming up and giving us such an in-depth look at what's really happening up there, because everyone always asks us. And, you know, the old saying that a picture is certainly worth a million words now when you see things like this. And I think people really underestimate how much stonework and millwork and concrete and trees and shrubs really go into a project like this and how long it really takes. So I thank you so much for all your perseverance and your hard work.
It's our pleasure.
Any other comments, questions? John, we'll look forward to seeing you next month, and by that time you should have turned over the facility to the Ritz, right?
Very close.
Okay. Thanks for coming.
Wonderful. Thank you. Congratulations on 40 years.
Thank you. Okay, that's the last of the presentations for today. Now we'll move on to non-agenda public comments. And if there are any of you on the audience who would like to make a comment on any item that's not covered by the agenda today, if you would stand up and come forward, and I will recognize you for three minutes to make your comment. Okay? Yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward? Did we miss the ball?
You did. No, actually, there's plenty of time to get to the spectacular Wizard of Oz themed super pet adoption fair. And I'm Glenda the Good Witch, and I'm here with Dorothy from the Wizard of Oz today. She's holding Jolie. This is not Toto, but I hear that he'll be here next time at your next meeting. And Jolie is one of loving all animals, adorable dogs that is up for adoption. And we're here today to promote a really spectacular event that's happening in your wonderful city two and a half weeks from now, the weekend of November 23rd and 24th. And that's the weekend right before Thanksgiving. It's going to be in the lovely Whitewater Park directly behind the River Shopping Center. And we'll be over there between 10:00 and 4:00, both Saturday and Sunday. We're going to have over 500 animals up for adoption, cats, dogs, and I think there's a few horses and maybe one mouse. So that's what we're having. We're also doing something a little bit different this year. We're calling it, rather than a super pet adoption fair, we're calling it a super pet adoption festival, because we're having a stage where there's ongoing music, entertainment, comedians going on at the same time while people are also looking at animals. So people, even if you have pets, shall want to come to this event just for the entertainment. And on Sunday, we're having a pastor come and do a blessing of the animals at around 12:30. That's on Sunday. So you can bring your own pet and have it blessed and be part of the nice ceremony. But it's going to be really, really exciting. We've got entertainment, food, lots of vendors, and of course, our wonderful adoptable animals. And they're coming from as far away as Los Angeles and San Diego. There's different rescue groups. There's a Maltese rescue group. There's a group with Great Danes, so we've got everything from every size to fit every household. So we just want to thank the city of Rancho Mirage for hosting this event. This is our fifth annual event, and thank you to the city council for having us here today.
The date again is?
The date again is November 23rd and 24th. That's the Saturday and Sunday before Thanksgiving. And for more information, you can contact our office at 760-834-7000.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you for being here. Will Oz be there at the event?
Absolutely. He'll be there with his wisdom. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks again. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on an item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to council comments. Iris, can we start with you for council comments?
Sure. I have something really, really big for you to put on your calendar, and that is our annual Fall Rancho Mirage Book Sale. And it is going to be held Thursday, November 14th through Saturday, November 16th. This will feature more than 10,000 books for sale. 10,000, amazing. And they are either like new or nearly new, and it is sponsored by our wonderful library foundation and staff completely by our equally wonderful library volunteers. There are bargains galore, and on the last day, you can pick up a bag for $3 and fill it to your heart's content until you can barely carry it. So if you need any information, feel free to call the library. It is 760-341-7323, 341-7323. Don't forget our book sale. Thanks.
Thank you. Dana?
Nothing today.
Okay, no puppy today?
Well, we had a puppy, and I think we've seen him, the little Jolie, Julie.
Okay, so next meeting.
That puppy will be available at the adoption festival, won't it? If somebody here doesn't take her.
Okay.
She's cute enough that she'll probably go today.
Thank you. Ted?
I'll make it very brief, that as our officers that are sitting here will attest, the snowbirds are flying in. A good portion have already arrived. It's time to be extra vigilant as far as driving is concerned. I've seen a couple of near fatal collisions, so to speak, even in the pavilion's parking lot, which is a dangerous spot to begin with. And the other thing is, of course, that as we approach the holidays regarding shopping, again, be alert to the fact that if you have packages, please put them in the trunk of the car. Don't expose anything that can be tempting. So the season is here. It's starting. Enjoy ourselves, but just be careful. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Scott, do you have any comments for today?
Just real quick, it's going to be a great weekend this weekend. Just a reminder to everybody that it's our big art affair at Whitewater Park, kind of our signature event of the year, both on Saturday and Sunday, so come out one or both of the days. Great music and great art, and just a great environment to bring the family out to. And also, Monday is Veterans Day, so happy Veterans Day to the many, many veterans in our city and throughout the Coachella Valley. Just really appreciate your service and all that you've sacrificed, as well as your families, to serve our country, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to approval of the minutes from the October 17th meeting.
Move approval?
It's a motion, a second, please vote. And the motion carries, 5-0. Next item on the agenda is the consent calendar. And the consent calendar is a list of items that usually can be approved in one blank and motion. Any of those items like to be pulled by the council today?
Yes. Would you pull number five, please?
Okay, number five has been pulled. Any items that the audience would like pulled out of the consent calendar? Seeing none, we'll go on to a discussion of the consent calendar by our city manager, Randy Binder. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The first item on your consent calendar is to waive full reading of the ordinances that are introduced or adopted pursuant to your agenda. Item number two is a second reading to amendment of Chapter 14 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, authorizing certain staff members to require the use of a certified arborist for abatement of violations involving trees and shrubs when it's necessary to protect public safety. Item number three on your consent calendar is your semi-annual activity report for the Rancho Mirage mobile home parks, portion of fiscal year 2012, and a portion of fiscal year 2012, 2013, and then 2013, 2014. And there is no reportable action taken by the Mobile Home Fair Practices Commission in any of the city's five mobile home parks. Item number four on your consent calendar is a resolution for the city council to consider that would allow the city manager to sign documentation to obtain the Homeland Security Grant Program awarded to the city of Rancho Mirage. And the award amount would be $4,221. $1,721 of that would be earmarked for cert backpacks, and $2,500 would be for emergency training costs. Number five on your consent calendar has been pulled by Councilman Hobart for future discussion. And number six is from our city engineer, Bill Enos. This would add a subcontractor to the Desert Sun Ranch Sewer and Street Improvement Project. Golden Valley Construction, that is the main contractor on that project, had broken equipment and could not do the proper curb molding for the curb and gutters along the road, and so they subbed it out to Larry's, Larry Jacinto Construction. And so that would be added, he would be added as a subcontractor for the Desert Sun.
Randy, can I just ask you one question about that? Am I correct in assuming that the original contractor is responsible for the expense of the sub who's being brought in?
Yes, there's no additional cost to the city. And the project is on schedule, I believe. Should be done this week. Number seven on your consent calendar are approval of contracts and purchase orders. And number eight are demands, and we are here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any questions on those items? Okay, anybody in the audience have a comment on any of the consent calendar? Seeing none, could I have a motion to accept items one through eight excluding item number five?
Second.
It's a motion, a second, please vote. Motion carries, 5-0. Now we'll go back to item number five. Randy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number five is to introduce an ordinance that would modify the threshold requirement for subdivisions to join a community facilities district. The city's practice since 1990 has been to require residential subdivisions of 20 lots and more to join CFD number one, Community Facilities District number one, created in 1990, reimburses the city for impacts of new development to help pay for police and fire services in the city of Rancho Mirage. There have been approximately 160 annexations to the CFD since that time, and the CFD has grown over the years and currently provides several million dollars annually to the city's operating budget. Practice has been to annex subdivisions as small as four lots into the CFD, and so this ordinance would amend the code to reflect current practice.
And the only question or two I had, Randy, is what was the original rationale behind setting the number at 20 instead of one?
Yeah, we researched that and could not find rationale for that.
So now everybody, anybody who builds will have to belong to a, the CFD or all CFDs that are applicable to them?
Yes, that's correct, any subdivisions.
Okay, that was the only question.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion? Oh, Iris, did you have a question?
I do. I just wanted to find out how this money, revenue is collected, in what form?
It is collected on the property taxes, I believe. Is that right, Isaiah?
That is correct. It shows up there as a separate line item on property tax.
Okay.
Comes in at the general fund.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this item? Can I have a motion, please, to accept it?
So moved. Second, whatever's left.
Third.
Do you want both?
We got both. Please vote. And the motion carries, 5-0. We'll now move on to the public hearing portion of our meeting, and this is the introduction of an ordinance next in order for the first reading adopting the new state mandated building codes and updating Title 15. And Steve Buchanan, the building official, will be giving us the details on that. Steve?
Thank you very much, and good afternoon, Mayor Kite, members of the council. Before you today is a public hearing to introduce the proposed ordinance which adopts the 2013 additions of the California Building Code with certain amendments and the expressed findings in support of such amendments. In July of this year, the state of California adopted a complete set of new building codes based on the latest additions of the national and international model building codes. These codes are known as the California Building Standards Code and have been adopted as Title 24 of the California Code of Regulations. January 1 of 2014 will be the immediate applicable date for all building projects submitted on or before that date, or after that date, I'm sorry, unless the city adopts amendments on or prior to that date. In addition to Title 24, the Department of Housing and Community Development has adopted regulations in Title 25 of the California Code of Regulations, which implement the state housing law, and those regulations are applicable to most of our residential structures within the city. The city is permitted to adopt amendments to these building standards provided the amendments are based on findings that are necessary and due to local climatic, topographic, or geological conditions. City of Rancho Mirage. City of Ranch Mirage is mandated by the state of California to enforce the 2013 additions. And the purpose of this proposed ordinance is to make the express findings regarding the local climatic, topographic, or geological conditions that require the adoption of more restrictive standards than provided, and to adopt amendments proposed by the city building official and the fire marshal. The fire marshal is here. If you haven't met him yet, James, this is our fire marshal, James Freiter.
Did I say that right?
And he helped and he did review these amendments and he did help with some modifications to them. The amendments set forth in this proposed ordinance are a direct result of many meetings with the building officials, local Coachella Valley chapter of the International Code of Council. And the goal was to create a greater uniformity in the enforcement of the building standards among the jurisdictions in Coachella Valley. Each of the jurisdictions participated in the code review process, including representation and approvals from the Desert Valley Builders Association and Desert Contractors Association. The two amendments that we propose to be more restrictive than the current code would be provide more stringent automatic fire sprinkler systems in all non-residential buildings. That would require all commercial buildings 3,000 square feet or in excess of 3,000 square feet to contain an automatic fire sprinkler system. On nine dash three shows the express findings that we've come up with to justify that statement. Nine dash four, our other amendment, is the findings to support mandatory use of copper wiring. And this will limit or not allow the use of aluminum copper wire as electrical conductors. The express findings are stated below. In conclusion, the city of Ranch Mirage is adopting the 2013 additions of the California Building Codes in their entirety and filing express findings to adopt more stringent fire and electrical wire protective measures. If this ordinance is not adopted as of January 1 of 2014, the provisions of California Building and Fire Codes effective at that date just won't contain the more restrictive electrical and fire sprinkler requirements. So we are mandated by the state of California to adopt the codes no matter what, even if we don't do anything. And the sole purpose of this ordinance is just to file the express findings and have a public hearing on the express findings so we can amend the two code sections that we had just talked about. I'm available for questions. Our fire marshal is available.
You don't get too many presentations from the city's building officials, Steve Buchanan. If you walk in any business in the city of Ranch Mirage and you see the certificate of occupancy listed there and there's a signature, it's Steve's signature on it. All the building permits pass through his hands issued in the city of Ranch Mirage. Thank you for your work.
I did notice that this is the fifth time that I've done this, and this happens every three years. And I believe three of those times, Councilman Kite was our mayor. So he probably knows this even as good as I do by now.
And we keep on approving them, don't we?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Steve.
Richard, I have a question. Steve? Steve, hang on just one second. You've made it clear that it's mandated and we have to follow this regardless of any disagreements. But has the building industry or construction industry indicated any type of addition, new change that they consider to be controversial or that they oppose?
The last time we did this, three years ago, they had introduced the new California Residential Code and the new Green Building Code. So we have a total of 11 codes now that make up Title 24. To answer your question, they've taken all 11 of those codes and they have raised the bar. They're making buildings more efficient. For example, the new energy code will increase the energy efficiency of single-family dwellings by about 23.7% on an average, which is very extreme. And this is going towards that whole goal of, you know, basically having a zero-energy use house by the time, by the year 2020. So to answer your question, they're more stringent.
Has there been objection raised, any one or two in particular changes that the building industry opposed and lost, the wishes were not there?
No, I don't believe so. I have met with all the other jurisdictions. I have met with the BIA and the DVBA, and we've gone over these requirements. They do all agree about the aluminum wire. They do agree about the fire sprinkler requirements because they do work. As far as any one item that anybody has any problems, the last three years ago, we now require single-family dwellings and apartment buildings to have a fire sprinkler system in them. Nobody's has really objected to that. If I hear anything at all, it's usually through the BIA addressing costs of houses. But now that the energy, energy standards are getting so much more restrictive and so much more efficient, it is offsetting by utility bills. And houses are actually starting to sell now.
Well, the, at the state level, Mr. Hobart, the building industry is very actively involved with lobbying the State Building Commission with respect to putting together these standard provisions. So by the time they get to us, it's kind of a done deal.
Yeah, no, I recognize that, but I'm just curious as to if there are any changes that are being made that were stringently opposed by the building industry. And I gather from what Steve said, nothing, nothing much comes to mind.
Well, just like what Steve said, now we'll go through a new three-year process to go through code development and establish and expand on our existing codes. So by the time it comes here to us, three years from now, it's been massaged pretty well and pretty much just about everything has been ironed out. Like I said, three years ago, the biggest thing was the introduction of the Green Building Code and the Residential Code. But we get through it every three years and everything settles down. We will have a lot of, or I'm expecting developers and contractors to submit quite a few plans on December 31 of this year to get out of the higher energy requirements. If they submit into plan check, that's the date of application that we deem them being. And then anything after January 1 will be per the 2013 additions of the building codes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Steve. Are there any other questions of the building or the building inspector or director? Official?
And John is right. The Ritz Carlton is moving right along. And if you do want to go up there and take a look, it is the time now to where you can really start seeing the materials, the colors, really get a good feel of what it's, what it is looking like. Yeah, that's great.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
At this time, I'll open up the meeting to the public hearing. And if there's anybody who would like to speak on this public hearing, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion, please.
We're going to have to make findings, are we not?
Mm-hmm.
Right. Well, I would, I would move that we make the findings set forth in the ordinance and starting on page nine dash seven and continuing through nine dash nine.
Okay. There's a second, Councilman Wile? Okay, thank you.
And I would move that we introduce the proposed ordinance as requested by staff.
Okay. Second. Okay, thank you. Please vote. Thank you. I forgot to close the public hearing, but the public hearing is closed and the motion carries five zero. Okay, we'll now move on to the action calendar for the day. And the first item is item number 10, which is transferring control, operation, and administration of the Ranch Mirage Golf Club program to the Weston Mission Hills Resort and Spa. And I understand we have Gloria Griego to give us the details. Gloria, our contract specialist.
Mayor, city council, in November of 2002, the city established the Ranch Mirage Golf Club program for the benefit of the residents of Ranch Mirage. Over the years, the program has been successful. However, within the past two years, we've experienced a decrease in memberships, a decrease in revenue, and an increase in expenses. In 2011, we were at 1,100 members. This transfer will significantly reduce the expenses. A financial analysis of the program is attached as exhibit A for your review. In fiscal year 1213, we did see an increase and we had a profit. However, we had to decrease marketing expenses and the gifts to the residents. In fiscal year 1314, the expenses will outweigh the revenue. There is no marketing and we obviously would have to purchase gifts. In fiscal year 1415, we would also see a reduction without marketing. In both those years, we would experience a loss. In August, the subcommittee and staff met with Weston representatives to discuss alternatives to increase the memberships, and the Weston expressed an interest in the opportunity to expand the program. The Weston submitted a proposal to take over control and administration of the program and open the program to other Coachella Valley residents. The rates would remain the same. There would be no changes to rates for the Ranch Mirage residents. The tee times would also remain the same at four days in advance. The Weston would also provide additional incentives such as hotel pro-shop lesson and food beverage discounts. The Weston would not receive a subsidy from the city since it will receive the $75 membership fees paid by the members. The city would assist in the transfer of administration and in joint marketing efforts. An operating agreement is still in its final draft stages. The term of the agreement would be for one year, and the program would be evaluated after one year to determine whether the Weston will continue its operation and administration. In the event the Weston should elect to discontinue its efforts in the administration of the program, the city would be given the right of first refusal to re-assume the responsibilities. The Weston representative, Ross Meredith, general manager, is present to answer questions. I will now turn it over to the mayor for comments.
Thank you, Gloria. Myself and Scott were the two members of the subcommittee that met with Weston representatives. We met with both John and Ross on several occasions to discuss this whole issue of the transferring of the ownership. I think the thing that's important to understand about this program is that it will remain in essentially the same status as it is right now for the residents of Ranch Mirage. There'll be no cost increase. There'll be no change in the golfing experience, and ultimately, it should save the city money. But we do have an opportunity at the end of this year to go back in and reevaluate it to see if what we have laid out in this proposal actually is working. Scott, did you have any comments on this before we go on?
Well, I think it was a very arduous and long process because we had a lot of questions and a lot of details. And we very much vetted out this decision, and it was a lot of back and forth. And I just really appreciate Weston's responsiveness and willing to continue that conversation with us. And I have a very high confidence that they will do an excellent job and continue the excellence that we strive for here at Ranch Mirage. So I'm very excited to see how this next year goes.
Okay. Are there any questions before we ask the general manager to come forward? Ross, would you like to? Oh, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. We're going to take testimony from the Weston first and then we'll open it for public comments. So Ross Meredith, the general manager of the Weston Resort and Spa. Ross, it's nice to see you this morning.
For the record, it's Weston Golf Resort and Spa, but that's.
Sorry about that.
So thank you, council. Congratulations on 40 great years. The Weston's only been a part of that city for 22 years, but we're proud to have been a part of that for all those years. The hotel's excited to sort of take the program from where it has been and from our opportunity allow us to grow the marketing and, and offers broader than just within the city of Ranch Mirage. We retain the benefits of Ranch Mirage residents, as you touched on, allowing four-day booking window and also allowing, in this case, for 2014, we've enhanced the program with a complimentary guest pass for everyone who joins. So you pay your 75 bucks and you get discount great golf options. And then in addition, you get the ability to bring a guest sometime throughout the year as our, as our guests. So the, the program we will, and we envision it and are marketing it on the basis that there will be a number of tiers available. So tier one, tier two, and tier three. The additional tiers provide additional discounts, benefits, and incentives to participate and to do business with the Weston, including complimentary guest room night, including discounts at spas and food and beverage areas and other parts of the resort that aren't currently part of the initial program. So we think it's a great opportunity to drive revenues and build strong relationships with the 1,000 members. The other thing we like about it is the ability with their permission, as we're asking for their permission as we go forward, the ability to directly communicate with them, speak about events, programs, and activities taking place on the resort and at the resort over the course of the 2014 season. So we're excited to be a part of it and look forward to a successful transition if the council deems it appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go to the council for comments if you'd like to, or questions if you'd like to take a few. Dana?
Yeah. Mr. Meredith, what happens if we vote no?
It's a great question. We would proceed with a implementing our program, our, our membership program.
Your expansion program into the rest of the Coachella Valley?
Correct.
Right.
Correct.
Okay, you would go ahead with that, and you could go ahead with that even now if we keep, because we can't tell you.
Right.
How to run your golf courses.
Sure. We would, we would offer a Ranch Mirage incentive and offering. We wouldn't attach the Ranch Mirage Golf Initiative or Ranch Mirage Golf Program name to it because it wouldn't have be sanctioned, but we would launch our.
Okay, let me, let me just get that one point. You're saying that if we don't agree, and I'm one who is not in favor of this. It was in 2002, Ron Meepo's and I, this was, I think, the first thing we introduced as a, as an idea, a new idea coming to the city after we were first elected. And this program has been very close to my heart and his. And if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying that if we disagree, you'll go your way, our members can join your Coachella Valley program, and the city can go its, its way because you won't call it Ranch Mirage City Golf Club any longer?
Absolutely. You would have every, every option or right to introduce an alternative city golf program. And we would have every option and right to market to city and non-city residents for a membership program at the resort and hotel.
And that's a right you've had ever since the beginning.
Of course. And there's been an annual, annual contract. I think one year there was a two-year contract, but in, but most of the time, it's an annual contract that comes up for review and approval. And this is the stage we're at today for the approval or renewal of the 2014 contract.
Is, I'm not sure, I, as I recall, I think it was your predecessor, GM at the Weston, who met with us. How long have you been there, Ross?
Two and a half years.
It was about three years ago when I was one of the members of this committee. And at that point in time, I had secured interest from two other golf courses, not including Ranch Los Palmas, because Ranch Los Palmas and Mission Hills were owned by the same people, and Mission Hills had some disagreement with the idea of us having a plan because it competed with them, and I could understand that. But back at that time, when I was introducing an effort to add two more golf courses to our program, your predecessor asked us in the most earnest of terms not to do that because of the economic impact it would have, a negative economic impact it would have on the Weston. And so we acquiesced because of our partnership and our wanting to do well by each other. Now it appears that that relationship is. Now it appears that that relationship is over and that at the end of our contract year, which is that the fiscal year or is...
Fiscal year.
Fiscal year is good till next June 30th?
No, I'm sorry. Calendar year.
Yeah. So it terminates December 31?
Correct.
And on January 1, you won't honor it any longer if we don't enter into this new arrangement? Or do you have an option there?
Contractually, there is no commitment on the part of the city to be referring or selling cards or members to our course after December 31.
Okay, well, what I guess I'm getting at is if we don't agree with this transfer today, that would still leave us negotiating time between now and December 31 to see if you're interested and if we're interested in continuing the relationship in some manner and under whatever economic terms we negotiated or you wouldn't even consider those negotiations.
I'm not 100% sure I understand the question clearly. If Council today decides they don't like the terms of the proposed arrangement, are you saying is there time for a further... Would we be open to talking about changes? Is that your question?
Well, my question is, is if we don't agree today to transfer the program to the Weston, does the Weston still allow for the possibility that we would be able to negotiate acceptable terms and the city continue the program?
We have prepared and we are fully prepared and set to launch our three-tiered Weston Mission Hills membership program, starting 15 minutes from now potentially, in an effort to drive revenues and capture golf relationships in Rancher Mirage and externally. So we would start that and kickstart that immediately and...
How would that affect Rancher Mirage?
The residents of Rancher Mirage under the proposed program, whether it be city sanctioned or not city sanctioned, the program is identical, meaning that Rancher Mirage guests, residents of five months or more permanent with proof of identification and those criterias would qualify for a advanced booking tee time, discounted rates and a guest, complimentary guest invite, purchase a membership card, pay the $75 and join our club.
Would that discounted rate be different than it is now?
No, the discounted rate is exactly the same as the 2013 rates. That rate structure is identical to the rates outside of the Rancher Mirage as well. So the discounted rate structure is the same throughout the Coachella Valley.
So anybody who wants the Weston's new program, all they have to do is go up to you and join?
Correct.
And it costs them, what, $75 just like it is now?
Correct.
Okay. So if we don't agree, any member, that is if the Council doesn't go along with this and the Council decides it'd like to take some time to look into other avenues of maintaining the golf program within the city and go to other parks, that wouldn't, you'd have no objection to that and our people would still be welcome at your place.
No objection to that. Their membership, their current membership expires on December 31. They would need to either purchase a new membership from us or entered into a different working relationship with Council and Weston Mission Hills prior to December 31. After December 31, their membership would have expired and they would be no longer eligible for discounted rates and the benefits associated with the membership program.
Unless they paid a new membership?
Unless they paid a new membership, correct. So I think we...
What was the reason that this program is not as satisfactory to you as it was?
We were, I think the biggest single reason is we were restricted to only offering the membership program largely to Rancher Mirage residents and our neighboring city, City of Cathedral City, doesn't have a golf program or doesn't have much golf option and there'd be a number of people wanting to participate in our program and they wouldn't be allowed to. So from a business entrepreneurial due diligence, you know, we saw and see an opportunity that's much broader. The other thing that's happening is that Rancher Mirage residents or Coachella, or other Coachella Valley residents are purchasing the, you know, the classic club discount card or membership and they're doing the Acesina program membership. There's a variety over the last number of years, a variety of golf courses that are out there looking at growing their base and growing their relationship and customer base. And so we were restricted and unable to do that under that, under the current program.
And if we dropped that restriction, how would you react then?
Well, I think that's sort of exactly what we have done under this program. That's sort of what has been presented to Council today. And special arrangements for Rancher Mirage residents with special benefits, unique to only Rancher Mirage benefits, and then a broader offering to non-Rancher Mirage residents.
They would be less favorable?
They are less favorable, absolutely. They do not, they get a change in booking arrangements, booking tee time arrangements and don't qualify for the $75 complimentary guest green fee. So you could argue, a golfer would argue that joining, a Rancher Mirage golfer would argue, joining our membership program is free because he gets an equal value of a guest green fee. And if we all know what it would cost to take, when we all have a visitor come to town in the first of February and want to go play a round of golf, it's, there's full value at a round of golf at the Weston Mission Hills complimentary because your Rancher Mirage resident purchased the plan.
How many, is that for one or more than one?
It's one time, one person. So it's basically a 70, we argue it's a $75 value only because it's seasonally adjusted. It's actually, you know, $100 value and $120 value perhaps in season. But so you purchase it for $75 and you get a complimentary guest fee for $75. That only applies to residents of Rancher Mirage.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's the toughest girl I've had. I had a budget meeting this morning and it was tough, but that was pretty tough.
Questions? Dana, can you go through a couple more questions?
Absolutely. The lawyer got me, so.
Tim?
I'll wait. I want to hear the public testimony.
Okay, thank you. Scott, did you have any further comments? Iris, did you have any comments?
I do have a couple of concerns, one of which is you mentioned your one, two and three membership tiers.
Correct.
Can you tell me what the prices are for things?
I can't. Allow me to be within $10 or $20. 75, 225 and 295.
Okay, and for our listening or watching audience, maybe you could explain what those will include?
Sure. So just additional, so enhancing a stronger relationship with the property. So those secondary tiers, complimentary golf clinics, complimentary golf use at the, so I think it's two complimentary golf clinics, five complimentary usage of the range, golf range on non-golf playing days, a complimentary night stay at our property. So it just varies and, you know, it varies with tennis discounts off our tennis, spa discounts, discounts on our fitness activity programs, complimentary tennis clinics, complimentary use of the tennis, our tennis ball machine at our tennis club. So I really, it's really to grow and build a big, strong membership base throughout Rancher Mirage, which will be 90% of our guests. That will be, you know, we want the residents to feel like we're their resort and that we have, they have a special relationship to us and that it's their membership and that they're part of the club. And just like, just like when you sort of have a home golf course and you call it your membership and it's your club and you bring guests and you make it feel like it feels pretty special to you, we're building that same, intending to build that same relationship with the residents and by having a membership card, by giving them special discounts and offerings, we think we build that relationship.
Right. Well, there's a couple of things that concern me. Number one is because you will be opening up to the general public, how will that affect the reservations that are made by the Rancher Mirage residents? And are they going to be kind of taking second best when you, when they go to make a reservation and things, reservation times are not available?
So they have an extra day advantage on booking tee times, which for the golfers in the crowd, you know, you understand quickly if you want to book for Saturday, but you know that you call on Wednesday morning and you've got, so they immediately retain that advantage and have an advantage. So we think that that's the most significant. The other thing is we own two courses and operate two courses and two great signature courses and there's still lots of available inventory at lots of times, not every day, but there's, we still, we haven't capped capacity. So we, it's our mandate and responsibility to grow revenues and we think with the extra day booking advantage, it will maintain that benefit for Rancher Mirage residents.
Okay. Well, the second thing that concerns me is that it sounds really good now as far as a $75 fee, but what happens two or three or four or five years down the line? Is there any guarantee that we have a commitment that that's going to be the price at that time and that's not going to change?
There hasn't been, hasn't been a discussion around that. I'm not opposed to adding some dialogue in the agreement around a future year or two rates. You know, I certainly don't want to speak for five and 10 years out, but certainly could speak to the next few years if that would be important to you.
Can I just interrupt on that? I thought you said there had been, I thought you said there had been some discussion as I refer to you made the comment that if at the end of one year, you decide you don't want the program any longer, we have right of first refusal to take it over.
I think that's actually was your staff that was speaking to that, but...
But is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, but here's the problem that that creates. We have spent 11 years building this club, this program. That program has, according to members that I've talked with about it, has a property value. It increases their property values to know that they have access, even though they're not club members, they have access through the city golf club to some good golfing courses, which the Weston certainly has, both Gary Player and the other course.
Pete Dye.
Pete Dye course. But if you don't like it at the end of one year, everything we've built, which you're taking over at no risk to you, everything we've built falls apart if you don't want to continue it at the end of that one year. We have right of first refusal, but by now the program is destroyed and that's disturbing considering that we started this program with 200 and some members in the first year as I recall and we've heard comments that it's, that the club membership has diminished over the past several years. That's sort of hyperbole because if the numbers I have are correct or anywhere near correct, that isn't really the case. For example, 2010, there were 1,161 members. 2011, there were 1,062, 100 fewer. 2012, there was 1,080, 18 more than the previous year. 2013, 1,015 so far this year with another month or two to go.
So yeah, I think your staff report or referenced that. We've never referenced the attendance or the numbers. We've celebrated, we've celebrated and appreciated the partnership from, for the last 10 years, certainly.
You're right. You didn't use those numbers. Staff did. It made it sound like the program was foundering when these figures show that we've stayed between 1,015 and 1,161 for the last four or five years. So I'll discuss that later. That's not your, not your issue and I understand that.
Yeah, I just didn't want to suggest in any way that we were disappointed with the relationship and which is what...
No, we've never been disappointed.
Which is sort of what you were implying somewhat is that we were unhappy with it. We think it's been a great partnership. We hope it continues to be a great partnership. Perhaps I haven't eloquently described our intent to, you know, use the, use the members as an opportunity to grow our relationship with them directly and provide what we think will be and what will ultimately be, you know, a much broader base of opportunities for them to have a win-win partnership with the resort. And, you know, currently we don't have access or currently can't communicate directly with them. That's one of our, one of our key reasons for enjoying this relationship change is that we can now sort of take them on under our wing and make them our new best friends from a hotel-wide perspective broader than just golf. And, you know, at golf, the loyalty is phenomenal. We have, you know, I think the year over year, if we look at that list, there's people that would have been on that list for many, many years and I think we have strong relationships with our team at Troon that operates both our golf operations. There's phenomenal customer relationships and we're just looking as an opportunity to grow that into the hotel side more substantially.
While it takes you a minute and a half or so of time to explain how phenomenal that'll be that you'll have individual contact with them, I would suggest that it would be a whole lot easier for us just to give you the names and addresses of those who don't mind you being able to contact them and letting our program continue. From what you said, I don't see anything about you're taking over our program that can't continue virtually the way it is. It may cost us a few dollars, that's our problem and we'll have to address that issue. Maybe we raise the dues five bucks or something, maybe we don't. But that would still be our problem and our program and you, if we gave you the names and addresses, everybody could market them to your heart's desire. Wouldn't that work for you?
That could be an option. I'm not sure if it would be to the same relationship level, but that would be something that we could explore.
Well, you know, I go back, Ross, I truly go back to your predecessor in that meeting we had in this building, room right over here, when I was hell-bent to bring in two more golf courses to give our members a total of four, which could be done like that anyway. We could still do that. They're out there. They, I hear people all the time saying, hey, I'd like to have our club join your program. And I said, no, no, we have an exclusive deal with you guys. But that time, three years ago, when we met, it was a matter of significant financial importance to the Weston that our program not be diluted from your perspective to include two other resorts. And we went along with that simply because we appreciated and honored the partnership, the relationship that we had. And my view is, what I'm hoping happens at the end of this meeting, it may be all over and I'm just talking in the wind, but what I'd like to see happen is I'd like to see us have a study session where your people were present, where we have our golf membership invited to come into it. We get their perspective. If nobody cares about continuing the city program, then by all means, I don't care. But it's always struck me as being something extremely important to our residents and I, until I read the staff report a couple of days ago, I had no idea that we were about to abandon our whole program. And I would like to, my motion at the end of all this will be to table the matter today, to set up a study session to go through it, where we go through all the permutations that are possible so that we can see if we can live side by side and go down the road where we're both happy. But we do have options. We can get other places.
Absolutely.
I would hate for us to divorce from the Weston.
Right.
I think you're a tremendous General Manager.
Thank you.
And I, that's an understatement of how I feel, but I'm not willing to abandon this whole program that was so important 12 years ago, 13 years ago.
Dana, Mr. Robert, may I just add one line? You know, you've referenced a couple of times the thought to add two more golf courses in 2010 or '09 or at some point a number of years ago. You know, I think, I think where the hotel might have been taken back by that is that I, to the best of my knowledge, it's been a, since 2002, it's only been the two courses. And so for you to approach the Weston Mission Hills a number of years ago and say, hey, we think we want to make it four now, your contract's expired, we're now going to make it four.
Wasn't quite like that.
It would have been a material change to the relationship.
Do you have any objection if we make it at four?
But I think they had been operating under a two-course relationship for eight years or seven years at that time.
Well, you know, you know one thing is true. Since you've become General Manager, that issue has never been raised... that issue has never been raised again, of expanding it to include others. We've just settled in with where we are. So even though you can say, we did raise the specter of more courses and leaving Weston Mission Hills vulnerable to change, that change doesn't exist in the last three years that you've been there, two and a half years you've been there.
I, I think it was actually in the last contract, the option for the city to add courses was, was listed in there as a, as a discussion point. So there's been, but it's certainly not in a dreadful way, or not in a confrontational way. But I think it's been ongoing, that's always been an ongoing option, as it's an annual contract or that expires is what, what the, what the program may look like at the end of the term. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, Ross, I was going to make, I wanted to save this until I heard some public testimony. But while you're standing there, rather than have you walk back up in a moment, do you see a structure that basically would bifurcate what you're proposing, i.e. where you meld the two programs? Where you still have the, if you will, the Rancho Mirage program, and then you also have the Coachella Valley program? Now, Rancho Mirage still then maintains its identity, which it markets, and you still have the ability of making this available to the Valley, if you will. On that basis, you still would not be precluded in any way from being able to market and merchandise the 1,000 members of the Rancho Mirage program, which I can understand is a high motivation of yours. That's a, that's a significant marketing group that you can take advantage of. I don't think that there would be anyone, basically, that would have an objection to getting a discount on a hotel room, or a tennis lesson, or anything along those lines. As you know, I'm a major supporter of your golf course, because I spend an obscene amount of money taking lessons from Barry Clayton.
Beautiful.
So maybe you could talk to him about reducing his fees. But.
Apparently, those lessons don't work well.
Yeah.
What a.
It's not Barry's fault, trust me.
Let me say this, what an opportunity I gave him. In any case, is there not some bifurcation that would work for both entities, that would allow us to maintain our identity, which is a marketing tool, for the city? I think we're going to hear some response from the public as to the value of this, and at the same time, allow you to accomplish what your objective is, which is very clear.
So I, the, under the current proposal, the membership card is uniquely different from, for the Rancho Mirage residents than it is for the non-Rancho Mirage residents. It carries the Rancho Mirage golf logo to it, as well as their Weston logo to it. We presented that to the golf subcommittee for their review recently. So I think we've tried to say, there's a, you know, a club within a club, and there's a group within the group, and that you are special, and that you have a sort of, you've carved out some, a different relationship with the, with the hotel and with the program than, than the non-resident ones. So we've done, I think, optically, we've done a little bit of that. The card is different, the benefits are different. We think we've tried to accomplish that goal. But clearly, we propose that we be the one taking your picture and presenting you your, your membership card and, and doing that at our property, and, and being a part of our, you know, distribution list and communication. But we still retain, you know, you could clearly argue, I think successfully, that, you know, there is a golf program within the city of Rancho Mirage, operated by the Weston Mission Hills and their two courses, where you show your, your proof of residency, you get special benefits, and your membership card outlines and identifies, and distinguishes you differently than non-Rancho Mirage residents. So I think we've somewhat done that, perhaps not to the extent you want, but.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't see a disadvantage to the Weston. If we maintain our golf program and make that membership available to you, so that you can again, market that group, I don't see the need for them to go to your facility, take their picture, get a card, and so forth. The identity of them coming to City Hall, paying their money, getting free balls, whatever it is, gives them a sense of comfort that we are supplying them with something special, being a resident of Rancho Mirage. And I think we would lose a lot of that, frankly, by turning it over to you, yet still giving you the opportunity to expand your marketing to all of these people. And I think that's what I'm struggling with, somehow holding on to that and still give you what you want.
Appreciate that, sir.
Thank you, Ross.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go on with public comments. Thank you. If you hear anything that you can respond to, we'll call on you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, would you like to come forward? And can we have your name and city you live in?
Michael Saywitz, and I'm a resident and property owner in Rancho Mirage. And I thank the city council and the mayor for the opportunity to respond to this issue. I also represent a group of golf committee who surround the Weston courses, live on the Weston courses. Mira Vista, Legacy, there's over 1,000 homes and residents that surround it. Those people have voiced an opinion, of which I'm echoing, that amongst other things, there's a property value issue that we're concerned about. And I want to bring that concern before the council. One of the issues that we have is that up to now, we've been able to offer our homes, if we want, for sale. In addition to the home, we have the exclusive opportunity for homeowners to play on these two courses. If they should choose not to join a country club, they would be members, so to speak, of the Rancho Mirage golf program, should they desire. This is similar to what Palm Desert does with Desert Willow, what the Indian Wells community does with the IW, and it makes Rancho Mirage competitive with the Palm Desert group and the Indian Wells group. What's being proposed here is eliminating that exclusivity that makes us competitive with Rancho Mirage, with Palm Desert and Indian Wells. These are the two other communities that people who are looking for homes are looking at. And these, this is a significant advantage to a home buyer, to have the opportunity to participate in a program like this that's exclusive to the homeowner. Now, in, and truth be told, these are not necessarily the best facilities of the three. Desert Willow has a much more elaborate clubhouse facility and more extreme golf courses. The IW club was remodeled, the courses were remodeled. Gary Player course doesn't even have a clubhouse that has a temporary facility. But whatever it is, the fact remains that for the residents of Rancho Mirage, and more specifically, for those homeowners that live on the course, this is a significant value that's added to the value of the brick and mortar of their home, because of the community in which they participate, in addition to being a matter of pride. And I would urge the council to consider not having this exclusivity removed from that. We, we've tried, now, the Weston has offered a four-day pre-tee time for residents. This is not a big deal. We've experienced the Classic Club, which has a similar Coachella Valley residence card available to anyone in the Coachella Valley for $15, not $75. And we found it virtually impossible to get a tee time, because the people who, first of all, you don't always know four days in advance, but even the four days, the, the thing that they're offering, by the way, is $395, I believe, not $295 for the 375, which is the top tier of what's being made available at the Weston, which allows anybody who buys that top tier to have the same tee time privilege as a resident of Rancho Mirage. So that, that's not an exclusive for Rancho Mirage residents, because you can buy your way in. And once again, having experienced the debacle of the Classic Club offering it to the Coachella Valley, it's in the same league with Takwitz, which also has a Coachella Valley card. And they do bring people from all over, and it's virtually difficult, if not impossible, to get a desired tee time. And the benefit for the residents is significantly reduced. And on behalf of those people, I want to make the council aware of our concern. Thank you for your time.
Okay, just, just one question. I'm not quite sure about your, your major concern, I guess, which is exclusivity?
Yes.
Okay, so even though it would be still the same name, Rancho Mirage Golf Club, and would offer the same courses at the same prices, I'm not sure as to how I recognize the difference.
All right, if they offered the Coachella Valley other cities at a higher price than Rancho Mirage.
Right.
Then there would be a, a benefit for the Rancho Mirage residents. In theory, they could say, well, only being a resident of Rancho Mirage would I have the $75 rate, even though other cities are substantially less. They're, we're prepared to pay the 75. But they're offering the same rate to people of Cathedral City, or India, or wherever.
But the Rancho Mirage residents get the, the one free tee time?
You know, we get that now from Troon, you know, from frequent use. So it's not something that we haven't had before. And the other thing is that people can get that extra benefit by buying the higher tier from the Weston. That's a sales pitch. You can become equivalent, quote, to a Rancho Mirage residence by paying more money. So the concern that we have is a reduced real estate values, desirability to live in Rancho Mirage, and not having the exclusivity in the use of the membership into the golf program of our city, which competes with residents of Palm Desert and Indian Wells.
Okay.
Mike, I have a question.
Yes, Scott.
Michael, just so that I understand, it's great to see you here.
Likewise.
You know, some of the comparisons that you use, those are city-owned golf courses. So there's a, there is a distinction between the IW club and Palm Desert, even Takwitz. And then there's things that they can do that we can't because of that factor.
All right. I, I grant you that. However, you know that. But the people who utilize the clubs don't know that. In other words, the person, the average resident of Rancho Mirage, does not understand the difference between the city of Palm Desert owning Desert Willow and Rancho Mirage having the golf program at the Weston.
Right.
In other words, I understand what you're saying, but that's something that only you're aware of.
The other, the other point is, that I think is important to make here, is that no matter what we do, the private sector-owned golf course is going to do this anyway. We don't have control. We can't force the Weston to not do a Valley-wide program. It's going to happen. And that's been made quite clear to us. And we can either participate in finding a way to create some level of exclusivity for Rancho Mirage residents, which is what we're attempting to do here. And it really comes down to a perk program, if you will.
Right.
And, and, and part of that is perception. But that is it. It's a special card. There are special benefits and perks added to it. But we, we can choose to do this and say, we don't want to change, and we're going to get left behind. And you'll really see a dip in the property value if there is no program at all, or if that program has to move to another course in the, in the city, of which there are very, very few options, really one. And that golf course does not compare to what you have. So we're kind of between a rock and a hard place here. And I really appreciate your feedback, because what I'm hearing from you is, we need to communicate really clearly, if we move forward with this, why we're doing it and why it still creates an air of exclusivity.
Well, other than making the Weston the bad guy, I don't know how you could save face in this. But yes, I hear what you're saying, and I appreciate all the due diligence that you personally have done on this. I know that you've worked hard on it. What I'm suggesting is that the council, I'm urging the council, to use their best efforts to try to retain the exclusivity that currently exists. Whatever it takes, you're the body that has the opportunity. I'm urging you to use your best efforts to do so. And I think, in the long run, the Weston would be receptive to something, because they need the goodwill of the, of the community. They don't want the bad will of the community. Right now, the majority of the play on those courses are from residents of Rancho Mirage. And with, without retaining that goodwill, they're going to lose that. So I'm here really to urge the council to use its best efforts to retain a relationship similar to what we have today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yes.
I just want to, my name is Alan Cooper.
Alan, why don't you use the microphone, please?
My name is Alan Cooper. I live at Mira Vista. And I'm, we represent the same group of frequent golfers. I'm not sure that the word exclusivity is, is really the issue. It's really, in my opinion, it's access to tee times. And the, the problem here, that I see, or the potential problem, is that if the, if their highest membership, which they call the Palm membership, which they're going to charge $375 for, if those people have four-day advanced tee time capabilities as Rancho Mirage residents, then there's no, then we can get in the same situation as happens at, that happened at the Classic Club, or Ascena, where once they open those programs to everyone, you could, it's very difficult to get a tee time. So I don't know how successful they'll be at selling those memberships.
Right.
But if enough people sign up, we will be in the exact same position as everybody else in Coachella Valley, who sign up for that membership, four-day advanced tee times. And it may turn out that we're going to have trouble getting tee times. So I think we should ask the Weston to give Rancho Mirage residents that one-day advantage over their other membership levels. So maybe give us five-day advanced tee time membership, availability, instead of four, for their top of membership.
Yeah, we, we did try to differentiate between the Rancho Mirage members and the Coachella Valley members, where we did give a four-day exclusivity or tee time for Rancho Mirage, and three-day for the balance.
Well, it's not. It's four-day, it's three, it's three days for the $75 membership, and for the $275 membership. But they have four days advanced booking capability if they pay $375. So if enough people sign up for their highest-priced membership, they'll be on an exact same situation as Rancho Mirage resident.
So you would be.
Here's their, here's the card that they printed.
You would be okay if there was a differentiation between the Rancho Mirage residents and the rest of their premium members?
Well, to me, and to a lot of the people I play golf with, and we're frequent players on those two courses, it's access to the tee times that's more important than the, than the price, in many ways.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, over here.
Good afternoon, mayor and council. My name is Vern Coslin. I live in Rancho Mirage. I'm a member of a private club, as well as the Rancho Mirage Club. And, and I think the plan really has a lot of merit. One of the concerns, I think, that hasn't been talked about, is the fact that your projections that were raised for the next few years, I think, are reasonably optimistic. What, what is happening throughout the country, and especially in the desert, is there are fewer golfers and fewer rounds of golf being played. So from a revenue standpoint, and in expense of the program, I think that realizing So from a revenue standpoint, and in expense of the program, I think that realizing with the hotel taking it over, they're going to burden the risk of potentially declining rounds of golf and members, as well as continue to provide, I think, an enhanced program. I think it sounds very good, and I'd be supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, in the back?
My name is Richard Nicolopoulos. I live at 81 Villa Las Flores, and that's the Mira Vista development. I also was a golf coach for about 30 years at the University of San Francisco, moved down here 10 years ago. Find this city to be a very exclusive area, a very prestigious area. And I belong to many, you know, private country clubs, the Olympic Club, Lake Merced in San Francisco. Both the courses, the Western Pete Dye, the Gary Signature Course, classic magnificent As I came to the city, to the chambers here, I mean, to the offices, there's an advertisement there, sitting there yesterday, "Join the City Golf Club." As I check your website, "Join the City Golf Club." I also had the opportunity to, your staff report, how many of you have read your staff report? The whole thing. C-10, maybe Scott has, because you were on the committee, and you also. I had a chance to peruse it yesterday. Take a look at it. Your financial report, somewhat questionable.
I assure you, we've all read it completely.
Okay. Anyway, what I'd like the council to do is to notify those members of the city club as to what's happening. You're making a decision today that affects 1,100 people, 661 people, no advance notice. And I think for a city that should pride itself in this exclusive club, the citizens should be notified. Thank you.
Just to comment on that, the reason we are doing this today is, we want to notify all the residents, because the play would start as of January 1. So we're giving them two months' notice of what's going on. And we have planned to send out notices to every resident of Rancho Mirage, whether they're a member of the golf club or not, within the next week.
And within this process, you're talking about all the residents of the Coachella Valley, or being part of this?
Well, we're talking about mailing out to all the residents of Rancho Mirage. We're not mailing out to all the residents of Coachella Valley.
Well, I think his point, however, Richard, is that the members of the club should have a voice in this discussion, not simply receive a mailing from us telling them that the club is gone, and it's now been taken over by Western. That's the point I think he's making.
The subcommittee, I've never heard of the subcommittee. I just, I heard something three days ago that this might be occurring.
Sure. The club is not gone. The advertisements will still be in City Hall and on the website. You just get your card done over at the Western instead of here. You still get a better deal than everyone else in the Coachella Valley, and everyone else included in that program, but you get more perks than you have been getting with the city, because now we can afford it, because we save a lot of money by essentially outsourcing.
How much money did you save?
Gloria, what is the approximate savings of this outsourcer?
Total dollars.
Sure.
So to, I guess, clarify, there is no budget impact as a result of this change, and the reason is because this is, would be something new for the city. What we're doing is, we are removing the estimated revenue from the city collecting the $75 fee, because under this proposal, the Western would now be doing that. And then we are also removing the related expenses as a result of this program. So what that means is, under the old way of operating, we provided a one-time fee to the Western for accommodating our residents, and then we also subsidized the rounds that our residents were playing. And then the city had also budgeted for various promotional and giveaway items. So the removal of those items is an equal amount as the removal of the revenue, and what's that is doing is, it's leaving some budgeted expenditures for the mailer and for anything else that the city would encounter in the future.
I don't think that answered my question, though.
Let me try to answer your question. We see here on page 10-4 of the report that we got. It shows that in fiscal year 1213, there was a $4,000 deficit or loss to the city. In 12, between 12, well, there's two of them that say 12-13. The other one shows a $5,900 net profit.
Budget and actual is what you're looking at.
Okay, whatever. At any rate, the worst year, that is fiscal year 1314, shows a net loss of $10,400.
Right, with $85,000 in expenses.
Right. I mean, the loss that we've suffered has been relatively insignificant. It's a loss. We try to get past that. But the idea was always to have some kind of a loss. The idea was to provide something for our residents, to give them a special club, just like we spend money on the cultural commission. You know, it may cost us money, but we do it because it's an advantage to our residents. I mean, to say that we have to make a profit out of this is not something we've ever considered, although I would suspect that we've done better in other years, but I don't know, since we only have these four years in front of us.
Anyway, I would just recommend the council to take a clearer look at it again. I know, Councilman Hines, you made a statement that it's a fait accompli, it's over, it's done. I heard you say that, but 20 minutes ago.
They're going to do this program without us, no matter what.
I would, well, I would recommend to the council, I think you have a little more leverage than you think. We do live in the city of Rancho Mirage. It is a well-run city. It is a respected city, and I wouldn't be pushed around, anyway. Okay?
Thank you.
I don't think that the Western, I can't speak for Ross, but I don't think the Western is saying my way or the highway. I don't get that feeling. The feeling I get is, let's see if there isn't some mechanism that works for everyone, regardless of what that might be. At least, that's my perception, and I would hope that that would become a reality.
Okay. Are there any other comments from the audience? Okay, thank you. Comments, questions, before we go to a motion? Yes, Iris?
Yes, I would tend to agree with Ted. I think there are some other conditions that might be able to be reached, where we can offer something extra for our residents of Rancho Mirage, since this has been such an important program that everyone takes pride in. And I know that the Western certainly wants to work something out, and I know they're going to move forward with their own program, but just to make sure that, since this has been a program that has been so substantial with our golfers here, that perhaps we can reach an agreement where a little bit of extra perks can be included, and we can make it more desirable for the Rancho Mirage residents.
Well, Iris, I don't think this is a question of perks. I mean, we are...
Well, you know, when you consider having an extra day to make reservations, and I think that...
Okay, if you consider that a perk, then that's...
That's, to me, and I think that to a lot of golfers is an additional perk.
And again, we are not doing away with the City Golf Club. City Golf Club will continue to function regardless of which way the council decides to go. We are turning over the operation of the club to Western, who basically is doing that right now. I mean, they're operating the golf courses. They're keeping track of the players and the number of rounds that have been played. Basically, all we do is, we have the people come in, get their membership card, and they go. That's their only contact with the city. It's not as if we're giving up a major item for the city to manage. We don't manage the program. And the thought that, a year from now, that if the Western didn't want the program, they could destroy the program in a year, I mean, that's ridiculous. The program is a strong program. It has strong membership. It has great benefits. And the program will be there a year from now, whether it's run by the Western or run by us. It is still the Rancho Mirage Golf Club.
And I understand that. And I just have my concerns as far as the price being raised a couple of years down the line, and also a number of people having conflicts with not being able to get a tee time, because the higher-priced memberships are going to take precedent. And that is a concern of mine. And I think that would be a concern of a lot of the golfers.
Is it right now, if you have the Rancho Mirage, you have the priority? If you join the Rancho Mirage Club, you have priority tee times right now, today. That's what we are proposing.
Tier three is going to take...
So Tier three has four days, and the Rancho Mirage Club has four days.
You know, we have the ability to review this program on a yearly basis. If a year from now, we got to the point where it looked like their Tier three were taking over the golf course, and it was not allowing our members to play, we could go back to Western and negotiate another schedule for that. I think to send us back to stage one and try and renegotiate the whole thing, it's not really going to accomplish a whole lot.
One comment I'd like to make about what Mayor Keigh just said. One year from now, things will be roughly the same as they are, put it back together. One year from now, we won't have collected a nickel from anybody, because all the money will have been collected by the Western. One year from now, we won't have marketed anything, because we didn't have a marketing budget, because we didn't need to have a marketing budget. It was all taken care of by the Western. So at the end of one year, we don't have members at all. Western has got a group called the Rancho Mirage Golf Club, or something like that, but we, the city, don't have anything. We don't have a program to assimilate it, to start it over again, to get the people to come back here, start paying dues here, would be a significant undertaking that we have had the opportunity to develop as years have passed. I mean, we've been at this program since 2002. We wouldn't be able to jump back into where we were. Plus, we wouldn't have the opportunity, we'd have the opportunity to find other courses, but we'd be under the gun. We'd have a dead program that we're trying to reestablish, and we wouldn't even have the courses for people to play in. I think to say that the status quo would continue to exist is overly optimistic. The other point I'd like to make is, this whole thing was presented to us by staff as being economically unfeasible. And as I said, on page 10-4, we have, it says fiscal years, the same one twice, but at the most, we've lost $10,000. At the best, we've made $6,000 in one of these periods of time that it's talking about. It's not an expensive program. And I know that there are, that we can work something out with the Western. I did not believe for a minute that the Western wants to lose all that business, because if they did, they know that what we would do is, we'd go to pick up two or three other clubs like that, that fast, who would join us, be tickled to death to join us, on our current terms, or awfully close to it, and the Western would lose that business. Why would the Western want to be in that position? They wouldn't. They would want to be in a position of negotiating, let's meet the needs of Rancho Mirage and its residents, and its 1,000 people, and let's do it, by the way, let's put this together in the context of letting those 1,000 people speak a little bit to this. We don't have to do this now, and if Western threatens us, they'll all know it. They will understand the predicament that we're in, and we will not lose favor with them. They'll just say, put together as quickly as you can two or three courses, and let us resume it where we are. And I know that there are good courses available, because the good courses have talked to me about it over the past several years, but I've just shined them on as not being something we're interested in. But if the Western forces us to be interested, then we'll do what we have to do to salvage the club.
Dana, what are some of those courses that you've talked to?
I don't want to say the names of them, but I'll tell you privately what they are.
We did a pretty exhaustive search, and there are not...
I don't want to speak for that. I told you.
We've spent a lot of time addressing that issue.
Well, hang on a second. The way I phrased that was, that over the past several years, other clubs have told me they would like to be participants in this. That's what I said. I haven't talked to anybody in the last year, or two, maybe two years even, although I know that one club, one person from a club told us, asked me that question, within the last two years. But, and I don't know that they're still interested, but I know one thing, we shouldn't be making this decision without the 1,000 members having some input into it, and allowing us to consider the possibility of maintaining what he's referred to and what others have referred to, is a valuable property value right that we have in this city with our club.
Ross, you may.
And I'll waive any objection, because that portion has already been closed, but I'll waive the objection, so that you can speak, because I just want you to know, you're getting a privilege that isn't always granted.
Just wanted to add a couple of points. I just double-checked with our golf team. 12% of the, there was a comment, I think, made earlier, that most of the golf revenues are generated through the resident program. 12% of the rounds that we do annually come through the resident program. So just to put a perspective on, we have, you know, between our hotel guests, between our neighboring villa property, and between our group and external play, so about 12% of the play. And I think we've had a great relationship, Mr. Holbert, when you were mayor, have enjoyed a great relationship, and we'll look forward to enjoying a great relationship with the Western and council. And in no way do we mean to suggest, or in any way suggesting, a threat of anything. I think what we are saying, and tried to say, was, an agreement between two parties came to an end, and there was a discussion, open and candid, on both parties apart, about what the, do we want to continue a program? Do we want to modify it or make changes to the program? And we propose something that we believe, still today, enhances the relationship with the residents of Rancho Mirage, and expands the marketing opportunity. So I apologize if, for some reason, you believe that we are threatening you. We certainly, we certainly didn't mean to...
As a matter of fact, I said, you haven't threatened us. I don't think you want to walk away from this business at all. That's what I said.
Absolutely.
I think we're friends, and I think we are partners in some form.
Right.
No threats from you at all.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Ross, could you address the issue about the premium members and the $375 members?
Sure, thank you. So on the premium, on the premium option, thank you for correcting my price point at $375. They, one of the benefits, we've got a list of benefits, one of the benefits is the fourth-day booking advantage. I would be thrilled, well, my colleague in sales and marketing would be thrilled, if we sold 200 of those members at that membership level. Sales guy behind me would say, Ross, don't sell yourself short, maybe there's 400 in it. I think it's 100 to 200 members at that level, and it was an added benefit or bonus perk. The, what I understood, it's before my time, but what I understood transpired at the Classic Club, was, I guess, a number of years ago, they sold thousands and thousands and thousands of memberships, causing total chaos on their tee booking sheet. That is not us. We have a history of 1,000, 1,100 members currently in place. If we ended up with a total membership increase to 1,500 next year, I'd be thrilled. What would that do? That might take the golf play from the membership program from 12% to maybe 17% or 18% of our mix. So there's still a lot of different components that drive and bring the mix to our, to our two great resorts.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Ross, you're going to move forward with your valley-wide offering club, no matter what happens with the city program, correct?
We intend, absolutely. We intend to launch a multi-tiered program and roll out something. If there's a modification, feedback from this council on a way that they'd like to see it better or different, we are absolutely open to looking at that. I'll reprint a brochure, if that's necessary. So we're not opposed to some feedback based on today's meeting whatsoever, because as Councilman Holbert mentioned, we have a great relationship with our 1,100 members, and a great relationship with city council, and a great relationship with the city of Rancho Mirage. So we are not going to be unreasonable about something, if there's something in particular that is sensitive... that is sensitive, that's been identified today, we would be open to that. Are you asking me, are we going to sell to expanded membership to people in Palm Desert and Ranch Mirage that may want to spend money and be a part of our golf program? We will be, and we need to be, it's part of our growth and development.
And that's part of just the trend in the golf industry right now, and certainly we've seen that throughout the Valley. You've got Acesina and all of these others that are doing these, you have to do the same to compete.
Correct.
So we can be a part of that, or we can not.
We will be 90% of that, is my guess.
And are you open to us adding any other golf club courses to the Ranch Mirage Golf Program at this time?
You know, we weren't excited about that option.
You said no, pretty adamantly to us, actually.
I did, right?
Yeah. In fact, you guys said we would be interested in not participating this year, so, right?
Sorry.
If we were to require that we add additional golf courses, it was your position during our negotiations, that you would just go and do your own program and not be part of the city?
Largely, yes. The uniqueness was, since we are capturing the information and selling the membership and driving the marketing piece, and spending the money and driving the marketing piece, and building our website, and talking about the club, that having alternative courses in there becomes a little bit confusing, very much so for that offering, and for what we thought was the city offering, so...
Would it be your contention that a private-sector professional golf resort is better at marketing a golf program than a municipality?
Yeah, I think the city's done a great job with their program, and I congratulate it, it's been important, and I think it's been a great partnership. I think it's done a great job.
Do you think you probably would do it better?
Well, we're trying some things differently than the city's done, right? We're trying some, we're approaching it from a different perspective, different tier pricing, different marketing options, you know, reaching out to different customers, so we're doing things differently.
And you've added some enhancements to what has previously been the city program, right?
Correct.
Which are things like...
The current city program did not include the complimentary golf, and that's the biggest single enhancement, and I presented that right off the bat, thinking that, you know, the members and the guests that I've been speaking to are thrilled with the concept of the complimentary extra golf pass, so...
So there's no change in the program in price? You've added more enhancements to the program. The only difference is, you go over to the Weston to get your card printed, as opposed to coming here to City Hall.
And we retain your, with your authority, with your permission at sign-up, we retain your communication information and allow ourselves to speak to you directly, market to you.
Thank you.
And the $75 membership fee, of which the city was paying most of that back.
I think the finance could speak to that. Most of that came back to us in either a one-time initial fee, and then some rate adjustment fees. So there wasn't a whole bunch of variance, I think.
Ross, what I heard was, which is what I wanted to hear, that you're open to possibly some alternative that works well for both of us, maintain the relationship that we have, which I think is important for both of us.
Right.
It's an excellent relationship.
Thank you.
We want it to continue.
Thank you.
And if indeed it means spending a couple bucks on reprinting something.
Sure.
That's not a big deal, and therefore, I'm very encouraged about that for our council and our residents, and I would like the opportunity to be able to address that over the next few weeks, and see if we can't resolve that, and come up with something that's very satisfactory for everyone.
I think we're saying the same thing, let's find a win-win, and if there's something there that is particularly sensitive to you, and important to you, then I'm going to work hard with our team to find a way to execute it.
Good, thank you for the flexibility.
Thank you.
Council, you have the opportunity here to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we postpone the matter to the next, to the December, wait a second, let's start with a motion to table the matter, so we don't have to worry about the date, and that we set in progress, as quickly as possible, a study session, to which all of the club members will be invited, as well as anybody else who we think is significant, so that we can find out how this program can continue to exist, and not be taken over by the Weston, but allowing us to have the type of relationship that we have had, that's been a very symbiotic relationship. That would be at least the outline of a motion.
Councilmember Holbert, I can support that, but I just have two questions, just on the impact of that, so I don't see a problem with us continuing to talk about it, to get it to where everybody's comfortable. But I do have a question, I've been under the impression that, Gloria, that we're under somewhat of a timeline right now, in order to begin the marketing process, et cetera, and I don't quite remember all the details. So can you tell me, sort of, if we delay this, what would be the impact from essentially the rollout of this next season's program?
We would normally begin accepting new memberships about this time, so it would delay us, but it'd be possible, it's possible.
Great, thank you. And then, secondly, if we notify all the golf club members, which I think is a good idea, do we have a cost-effective way to do it? Like, do we have all of their emails, for example, so that we could do an email blast, as opposed to a mail-out, which actually could be quite expensive?
I don't think it's that expensive.
Are we just talking about notifying the current members, or all the Ranch Mirage residents?
Current members.
1,100, 1,200 or so that we've got.
Current members, tell them we're going to have a meeting in this room, a study session in this room, as quickly as we can put it together, as many of them who can attend will, and give us an opportunity to get their input, find out, see if we can't find a way to bring to the Weston what it wants, and bring to us what we want. I mean, the thing to me is, it's important that we have Ranch Mirage Golf Club, and not some pseudo Ranch Mirage Golf Club, that is essentially owned and managed and run by an outside agency.
Okay.
I mean, this is an important issue, as the gentleman had mentioned, as property value interests, plus it has a panache to it that allows us to talk to the people in Palm Desert, yeah, we have a golf club too, and it's as good as yours. We have two courses, well, they have two courses at Willows, but what the heck? We'll pretend like we don't know that.
Do we have a motion on this item?
That's what I just did, I made one.
Okay, was there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, all in, please vote. Motion carries, 5-0. We'll now move on to item number 11, which is the Whitewater Park Expansion Status Report and Design Services Contract. And who's going to be handling this?
Bruce Harry will handle this, Mr. Mayor, and a follow-up on the last item, so we'll get that study session scheduled as soon as we can.
Right, thank you.
Bruce?
Thank you, Randy. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The final design element of the Whitewater Park Expansion project, which was the children's playground area, has been finalized now, and the consultant is now placing all their focus on completion of the construction drawings and the contract specifications. Now that the preliminary design phase of the project is complete, the consultant has requested a small amount of additional compensation to cover services for work the city requested they perform that was outside their original contract scope. On page 11-2 of the staff report, I've outlined those additional services, which there are four, along with their associated costs, which total $15,150. Staff met with the consultant to discuss the additional services, which we agreed were additional services beyond the contract, and we agree that the additional $15,150 is justified. The consultant and his team are now fully engaged in the final design drawings and specs, as I've mentioned. The design plans will be 60% complete by the end of this month, and 90% complete by the end of December. The current project schedule shows advertising for construction bids in late January of 2014, award of contract at the March 6 city council meeting, start of construction will be on August, I'm sorry, April 1, and construction completion by mid-October 2014, in time for it to be debuted at the new park, to debut the new park at the 2014 Ranch Mirage Art Fair. The latest opinion of probable construction cost revealed the total project cost is at $3,448,000, which is itemized on page 11-5 of the staff report. The current approved construction budget for the project is $3.5 million. On page 11-3 of the staff report, in the middle of the page, I have listed the four items with their associated costs that are being identified as bid alternates in the construction bid documents. They include the construction of two pickleball courts, landscaping improvements on Button Drive, replacing all the existing park furniture with new park furniture, and installation of a misting system in the children's playground area. The total of those extra improvements total, I believe, $225,400. Staff recommends that we bid those as alternates, hoping that the construction costs will come in under the estimate, and we may be able to add some of these bid alternates into the project elements. It was decided that the water feature element that we discussed at several study sessions could not be part of this project, as the project budget was insufficient to cover it. A water feature could cost anywhere between $300,000 to $400,000 easily, based on what we were looking for. However, we are making plans with the design to easily accept a water feature in the future that could be easily installed with little to no disruption to the park operations. The consultant was directed to explore water feature types and costs. The results of those investigations are on page 11-6 of my staff report. Renderings for the Whitewater Park will be on display at the city's 40th Anniversary Community Concert and Picnic at the Whitewater Park on Saturday, November 16. I'd like to share with you today six color illustrations that we're proposing to put on boards for that display. The first one we'd like to display would be the overall site plan of the park. This is going to need a little bit of correction, which we're doing right now, because it still shows the old dog park on there, but the architect is in the process of modifying this rendering to what the council had approved. So we'll have this rendering available on a 30-by-40 poster board, which will be on display at the park event. The next one would be a, sort of an aerial side view of the new amphitheater. The next would be more of an interior amphitheater view, which will show some of the areas, the mezzanine areas of the amphitheater. The next view will be the grand arrival area off of Button Drive. The next picture we're looking, illustration we're looking at, is the promenade, this shows the 15-foot-wide promenade area that basically meanders through the park. And the last, of course, is the children's playground area, which we like to show, and that will be updated as well with some of the discussions that we've had at our study sessions. So staff is recommending that the city council approve an amendment to the Herman Design Group contract for the additional services outlined in the staff report, along with the additional compensation of $15,150, and also approve a mid-year budget adjustment expenditure to the license tax fund, which there is adequate funding to cover the $15,150 request. Staff is also recommending that you just receive and file this project status report, and future status reports will be provided as the design progresses. I'm here to answer any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Any questions or comments from staff? Dana, are you there? Oh, Dana, you're not there, okay.
Be kind.
Okay. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to address this issue? Okay, seeing none, we'll come back to council for a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to approve an amendment to the Herman Design Group contract for additional services in the amount of $15,150, and approve a mid-year budget adjustment expenditure to the license tax fund in the amount of $15,150.
Second?
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Dana, did you hear the motion?
I did.
Okay, please vote. Motion carries, 5-0, and look forward to having everybody at the park, and actually have an opportunity to review the renderings of the park expansion, week from this week, two weeks from this weekend. What's the date again on that, Bruce?
It's November 16.
November 16, okay. And as you heard before, it is a picnic and music concert. Should be fun. Okay, we'll now move on to the next item, which is item number 12, renaming of Whitewater Park to Ranch Mirage Community Park. And Randy, are you going to handle this?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Earlier this year, Mayor Protem Spotridge asked staff to explore changing the name of Whitewater Report. We've had reports over the years that sometimes attendees drive out to the community of Whitewater off of I-10 east of Vanning when they hear the word "Whitewater Park." So we scheduled this for your February 21 council meeting, and you talked about it at that meeting in February, and your motion at the time was to direct staff to present this issue to the Parks and Recreation Commission, which Bruce Harry did as a staff liaison in March of this year. And at the Parks and Rec Commission meeting in March, it was, they discussed the issue, and Chairwoman Deborah Grindel suggested the name Ranch Mirage Community Park, and the name was approved by a 3-to-0 vote, they had three people present at the meeting. Independently, I had discussions at a reception at one of the speaker series, and suggested the name Ranch Mirage Community Park. And so, from our standpoint, from staff's standpoint, and the Parks and Rec Commission standpoint, that would be the recommendation, Ranch Mirage Community Park. And we know that usually, community parks are larger than the Whitewater Park, 25 acres in size, in planning, city planning circles is what you would call a community park, and a 10-acre park would be a neighborhood park. But knowing that the city's over 80% built out, and there are a lot of private amenities in gated communities in the city of Ranch Mirage, it's highly unlikely that the city will have a large community park in the future. And so this is likely to be the city's community park. And so from that standpoint, we would recommend approval of it, and you could potentially roll out the new name when we do the groundbreaking early next year.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff?
I have one question.
Yes.
Randy, would there be...
Push your button.
Like it's all working?
Okay.
Yeah. Randy, would there be any reason that we would have to vote on this on a fairly urgent basis, or do we have the potential of maybe using an article in the Insider magazine, along with an inserted prepaid postcard, for our residents to be able to vote? We can give them what the alternatives are, and we can leave them a line of other to add something, and have them get it back to us? Or that way, we would have the whole city participating in the name of the change? Because, you know, I just sense that there is going to be that nostalgic rebound that some people are going to have. It's always been called the Whitewater Park, we all know where it is, and all of the reasons for not making a change, and it would be nice for us to be able to say that we've turned it over to a plebiscite of the Ranch Mirage residents to give us input on that.
Well, certainly, we can do that, of course we can do that. I was following the direction of the council at your meeting in February, and, you know, of course we can do that, and there is no hurry to change the name, the name's been Whitewater Park.
The park won't even be finished for a year.
Yeah, it's been named Whitewater Park for 20 years. What's another couple months?
Why don't we have a contest along those lines, and then let the Parks and Recs Committee pick, like, maybe the top five names that are submitted, and then put it on the April ballot, let people vote on it?
Well, we could do it on the ballot, but we could just do it informally. I mean, I don't think, if we included a postcard that they didn't even have to put a stamp on, we'd get it back, and we'd get, you know, pretty substantial input.
What was the last survey we did? Was it the dog park issue? And we ended up getting, I think we sent cards to everybody in the city, and we ended up getting 25 responses, or something like that?
I don't remember that, but...
Well, I...
You know, we could do a vote, that way, a mail-in vote, and it's possible you might get the majority of people to say, "Let's keep it Whitewater Park."
You know, I think that is a possibility, and I would hate to tread over those people without there being a, pretty much of a democratic process. without there being a, pretty much of a democratic process in doing so.
How do we determine what are the choices on that postcard?
Well, we can, we can put Whitewater Park, we can put Ranch Mirage Community Park, Ranch Mirage Park, and other, and write in what somebody comes up with. As long as there are no other major ideas that are competing, beside really, it's just the two, as I understand it, Whitewater Park or Ranch Mirage Community Park.
I like Big Horn Park, I like Carol Channing Park. There are a lot of things that I would like to see.
Well, then that's what that extra line will be for you to write that in.
How about taking it back to the park commission and having them come up with a number of suggestions, us adding the suggestions, and then mail it out? I mean, maybe come up with a total of five suggestions.
Oh, that's fine, yeah. As long as we just put it to the voters. If we can have four or five names, that's great.
Rather than everybody write in their own choice.
No, I, and I, I think that's important, because I don't think anything would pass on that bottom line. So if there are other alternatives beside the three now that we've mentioned, I think it's great. I think you can call a meeting of them, a special meeting of the commission, and get their input, and then put those names on the ballot, and have Robert do an article on it, and get it out in the Insider.
Bruce, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. The city of Cathedral City right now is, is planning a new park, and they were proposing to name their new park, believe it or not, Whitewater Park. And I know they've been waiting for us, they've been hearing that we might be changing the name of this park, so I know they're waiting with bated breath to see what happens, but certainly, this is our name, we've had this name, so I think we have the ability to decide whether we want to keep it or change it. I don't think we should rush at that, just because they're building a park, so I just wanted to make that.
I think you're right.
Okay, well, maybe we should, what, continue this item to further investigation?
Right, we can just table it for now, but follow with the instructions we've just, the guidelines we've just given, and get the mailing out, and get the postcards back, and then have our meeting.
Okay, we can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So then my motion is to table the matter until we get the additional data.
Second.
Motion carries 5-0. Okay, we're now down to, and we're halfway there, we're down to item number 13. This is Coachella Invest sponsorship opportunity. And Kurt, are you going to be doing this? Oh, okay. Robert, didn't see you hiding back there.
Mr. Mayor, council members.
Robert Barrett, marketing manager.
Can I ask him a question about the last item? We're working on the deadline now for the next issue of the Ranch Mirage Insider, and we were going to bag it with the Ranch Mirage magazine, and so the council's direction is to try to get a, an article in the Insider and, and a self-addressed stamped envelope. We have time to do that.
Or postcard.
Postcard.
Yeah, just slip it in.
We can accomplish that, yeah. We've already written an article about the park. It's the cover article, as you've seen, Mr. Manager, and the envelope, and asking people to send us their ideas, we can, we can accomplish that.
Thank you. Robert, can we, can we also create a place on our website through like Survey Monkey or one of the others where people can just respond electronically?
No problem with that either.
Not everybody does snail mail, and that might be an easy way to do it as well.
Yeah, we can do that as well.
And just make sure that whether it's a postcard or whether there's an envelope with a card inside of it, that it's prepaid and stamped, so that they don't have to go to the trouble of spending a half a dollar to answer the question.
We'll accomplish it. No problem.
Council and Mr. Mayor, I'm here to talk to you about the Coachella Invest and the opportunity for the city to sponsor a major opportunity to promote our vision for the development of Ranch Mirage in the 21st century. This item comes to you with the endorsement of the council's Commercial Development Subcommittee. That is, membership of that committee is Mayor Kite and Councilmember Hobart. The staff recommends that the city council authorize an allocation from the Economic Development Reserve Fund to fund a $20,000 city host sponsorship of the February 2014 Coachella Invest event to be presented by DACY, which is the Desert Area Commercial Investment Exchange, and an additional $5,000 in related design and production expenses for the city's participation in the event. Now, here to tell you about this event is Lynn Coker, who's the Vice President of NAI Capital, and he's also on the board for DACY. He's been on the board for four years, and he's been their chairman for three years, and he's the chair of this effort to put on this major business event here in the valley. So may I introduce to you Lynn Coker.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for the opportunity to join you in your discussion about sponsorship. It's really exciting to be a part of this process. It's been a process that's been in place for over a year. This is our 10th anniversary for an investor forum. We've been doing this for a long time, and we've got a track record of success. Our 10th event is going to be bigger than anything that we've ever done before, and it's not because it's our birthday, it's because the timing is right. Bob, I wanted to bring up those slides. How do I do that, Robert? Okay, very good, thank you. The reason I wanted this up, we're doing this bigger and better this year because it's the right thing to do. The slide that you see has the logos of the companies and the organizations that represent the people that have been a part of this planning process for over a year. They understand it's the right thing to do. And what, and the motivation is that they look down the road, 60 months, and they see that we're on the cusp of an economic recovery. And in order to be good stewards and leaders in our communities, as all of these logo people want to be, we want to collapse the amount of time that it takes for people to invest in the Coachella Valley, more particularly Ranch Mirage. We not only want to cut down the amount of time it takes them to invest, we want to help reduce risk of their investment. And that's one of the things that happens with Coachella Invest. Our goal is to create a world-class business forum that covers two days, where we invite in 600 to 800 people, investors, developers, business operators, and explain to them the advantage of an investment in the Coachella Valley. And the reason we have to explain it is because right now, so many of them look at us as a tertiary market. They, they think of primary markets like Orange County, or Ventura, or San Diego. So we pump up the energy in our investment forum in order to get them here and encourage them to be a part of our recovery. Now, I'd mentioned that this is our, our 10th event. The others have attracted anywhere from 350 to 425 participants, and the makeup of that audience has been about 65% are going to be investors, they're going, and those investors can be either private investors, or they can be institutional investors, they've been developers, they are business owners, and/or entrepreneurs looking for opportunity in our valley, about 65% of all the people that attend. The other 35 that show up, the other 35% are people like you and me. We have the city administrative team that's there. Across the valley, they come. We have city elected officials at these events. We have lawyers, we have title companies that come, all the ancillary folks that are part of the network for a successful investment in our, our community. Well, this year, we're going to pump it up, we're going to get 600 to 800 people rather than 400 people, and the way that we do that is built upon something that we've never done before. We have hired Cord Media to be our media partner in getting the word out about Coachella Invest and making us top of the mind in terms of what investors would consider relative to their 2014 and 2015 investor investments. The way we do that is that we've already targeted something like 3,100 active developers and investors across Southern California. That's from Ventura all the way down to San Diego. We've got their name, rank, and serial number. We, we know how to reach them through media, whether it's television or radio. We know their addresses, we know how to send direct mail to them, and we have the savvy to be able to use the internet and email and social marketing techniques in order to get the word out to this targeted market. That's some of the gift that Cord Media brings to us as our partner. Now, in addition, another real important leg in terms of making this 800 people rather than 400 people, is that we normally held our event the last nine in the October timeframe. We're going to do this in February. And the reason is, as you well know, we have 150,000 more people in the Coachella Valley in February. Many of those are exactly the kind of people that we want to invite to this investor forum in order to understand how they can contribute to the recovery and the growth of our valley. Now, the structure of the event is it covers two days. February 5 is the forum with reception and exhibit hall. February 6 is the day following, and that is early in the morning, about 8:30. Seven of our nine communities, plus Riverside County, are taking investors and business people on tours throughout the Coachella Valley until about 10:30 in the morning, and then some of those who have been on those trips, they're going to go join a Big Horn golf outing, and that lasts until about 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, and then we have a cocktail reception for those golf outing participants. So as a result of those two days, we've upgraded the information that investors have about us, and they've built relationships with people like you, which eliminates risk when they start thinking about spending money out here, because they know the people, they know the leaders that make things happen. Our firm intends to do well as a result of this, this experience, and all of the stakeholders intend to do well as a result of this, and I'm, I'm confident that Ranch Mirage, through its participation, you will do very well as a result of being a partner with us in this venture. And I thank you for the opportunity, and if you have questions, let me know.
Stay with me, Lynn. The benefits that we have negotiated with DACY is, are for this event, which will be held at Agua Caliente Casino Resort, at four minutes' time on the stage, which is very unusual for a participating city, and we are going to produce, if you perprove this, a three-minute film that will demonstrate the opportunities in Ranch Mirage for developers in a very, very vivid way. We will also participate in an amenity, we will receive an amenity distribution where all of the information about development opportunities in Ranch Mirage will be put on a flash drive the size of a business card and inserted into the lanyards that everybody has around their neck, so at the conclusion of our film, our mayor can come on the stage and say, everything you need to know about Ranch Mirage is right inside your lanyard, a little tiny card that has a connection to all the information. We will receive a premier VIP suite at the event for 14 people. We will have a unique display opportunity at the entrance to the show, where we not just receive a table like the other cities, but we will have a large display area where we can put a themed exhibit on that's unique to Ranch Mirage, with either an automobile or maybe our partners at Craft Nabisco Championship. We will receive one of 12 trade booths in the VIP section, which is the flat section of the floor on the show, which they're going to create into a lounge area, and at the conclusion of the formal presentations, all of the guests will be invited down into that area, where free food and drink will be provided to them, and we'll be one of the only cities down there, and our leaders able to talk immediately with investors. We'll receive a two-page spread in the program book, logos across all of the collateral that they produce, and their websites and tote bags, and we'll receive the registration list of all the participants as they come to DACY. So we're able to know who's coming and communicate with them in advance. So those are the items. Are there any questions that you would like to ask, Lynn?
How, how has the success of the program been measured in the past?
Typically, the stakeholder group is made up of firms like myself, banking firms, people who are instrumental in creating and closing deals, and we look at each of these events in terms of the prospects that we're able to bring, and then once we're out, have we been able to actually do deals? And as a result of that, the stakeholder group, over the period of 10 years now, has stayed in the game, because we see real-life business coming out of this each and every year. All of those logos that I showed you up there, 80% of them are back every year in stakeholder positions, because we know we make business as a result of the venture. We anticipate this year that it'll be roughly about $5.4 million in terms of money to the Coachella Valley over a period of three years.
Thank you.
Is your organization a nonprofit organization, or do you make a profit off of this event?
Thank you. I'm, I'm the chairperson within the California Desert Association of Realtors, so we're a nonprofit association. I happen to be a vice president in a local brokerage firm that has tentacles around the world. We're the largest commercial brokerage house in the world. But my wife and I are residents of Ranch Mirage, have been since 2004, and this is a local Palm Desert company that we've established.
Questions down this way? Questions?
So the recommendation, staff recommends that the city sponsor the Desert Area Commercial Investment Exchange 2014 Coachella Invest Conference with a $20,000 host city sponsorship and approve an additional expenditure of $5,000 for related design and production expenses. Staff recommends that the Economic Developers Reserve Fund be used as the source of funding for this sponsorship and related costs. And that's our report.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who has a question or comment on this item? Seeing none, I, I was on the committee with Dana, who reviewed this proposal in the beginning. Just like to make a couple of comments. I think Coachella Invest is an investment in our future. This program will create a powerful coalition to showcase the importance of the financial benefits of investing in the Coachella Valley. The city of Ranch Mirage has an opportunity to serve as the investor forum host city. As we get, as we begin to see the economy improve, we have an opportunity to showcase some of our major properties of the city, those in Section 19, The Eagle, Five Peaks, and many more. We've set aside $5 million for economic development. For $20,000, or less than one-half of 1% of the 5 million, we can begin an investment into the economic future of our city. We'll be speaking to investors and developers from all over Southern California, and also with the sponsorships such as Wells Fargo, California Bank, Robobank, and others have committed funds to make this project work. I think in talking with Robert, he's really got an outstanding vision for what this program will do for us marketing, some of our top-quality properties, and when you look at the amount of money that we have to spend and the benefits that we get out of this program, I think it's well worth the money spent at this time, and we have a great opportunity to focus in on Ranch Mirage while a lot of the other cities that are our neighbors are already doing this sort of thing. So I would support the expenditure of $20,000 and an additional $5,000 for the program.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
All right, second.
And the motion carries 5-0. I will now move on to item number 14, which is the proposed revision to shop and dine. And who's doing that? Well, Kurt.
Doing a little tag-team match today between the Economic Development Group.
Okay.
Before you, there's a recommendation that the city council revise the description for the shop and dine Ranch Mirage program in your previously approved annual budget to provide greater flexibility in sponsoring special promotions at the river within the city of Ranch Mirage. By way of background, during September and October of this year, the city council's Commercial Development Subcommittee, consisting of the mayor and Councilmember Hobart, met multiple times with city staff to discuss, among other topics, various ideas to assist in activating vacant storefronts along the river's Highway 111 frontage, and to a lesser degree, within its central courtyard area. Currently, there are eight vacant retail shops in these two areas, which significantly contribute to a less-than-desirable shopping and dining experience for visitors to the river. Let's see if I can have the first slide. The city recently launched a three-week art fair gallery and kickoff reception utilizing one of the river's vacant spaces to promote the city's upcoming art fair at Whitewater Park on November 9th and 10th. On the screen before you now is a picture of that reception event. Given the overall positive reaction to this gallery experience, the center's management has indicated its interest in pursuing the city's suggestion to expand this temporary art gallery concept and allow the city to offer rotating mini-galleries in three of the vacant storefronts during the upcoming months of December through April. If you could put on the site plan, please. The site plan before you shows with the black circle the vacant spots within the river and the three site arrows indicating the locations of the proposed art. and the three site arrows indicating the locations of the proposed art galleries. The Commercial Development Subcommittee endorsed the concept of diverting approximately $15,000 of the previously budgeted shop and dine Rancho Mirage funds for this fiscal year to fund the city's expenses for this proposed temporary art gallery program. In order to properly reflect this change in the intended use of previously budgeted funds, the program description appearing in the city's annual budget should be revised as indicated in your staff report, basically adding the wording that these program funds may also provide funding for specialized promotional campaigns designed to boost foot traffic and enhance the shopping experience at multi-tenant shopping centers within the city. There would be no change in the previously approved total budget for the shop and dine program of $60,000. Staff recommends that the council revise that current description, as described in the staff report, to provide greater flexibility in sponsoring these promotions. Welcome any questions.
Thank you, Kurt. Any questions from council? Yes, Iris?
No, I don't have a question. Well, I do. But I think it's a wonderful opportunity to bring people into the river and to showcase a lot of these artists. Could you tell us how often you're planning to do this, and are they going to be ongoing? Will you have the same artist that is going to appear for a week or two at a time, and are you going to do multiple artists at the same time and fill up more of these empty spaces, or are you just going to limit it to one or two at a time?
Basically, the way the program will work, and there's a little additional detail on pages 14-5, 14-6 of your staff report, but generally, we will have three periods of these special art exhibits, December 1st through February 9th, February 12th to March 16th, and March 19th to April 27th. During each of those three periods of time, there will be all three of the designated galleries operating with different artists. And then as one time period ends, we will rotate into all three suites another set of artists. So basically, over the time period of this program, you will have nine unique experiences through that timeframe. Obviously, if the river is successful in securing any leases in any of those spaces, we would work with them to move our gallery out, move them to another vacant spot. But at this time, we felt it best that we could handle three effectively, give some variety based on their locations within it, and just really add a new sense of the experience. I might also mention that the budget that we've put together for this will also allow us to basically customize our previously budgeted radio commercials for dining opportunities during this period to make special mention of the Art Walk at the River before and after people have a nice dining experience in Rancho Mirage.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, come back for final comments or...
If I could just say...
Yes?
I think that, I think the idea was Robert's, if I'm correct. I'd just like to say, I thought that Robert came up with an extremely good idea, and I know that this will benefit the river significantly, having vacant stores turned into active galleries. And I just think it's a good value for the money.
Yeah, you know, I think the river obviously is the most important dining and entertainment complex in our city, and I think if we can bring more people into the river, and if we can partnership with the river management to help fill those spaces, I think this money is very well spent. And it's a great program on top of that. Rather than having empty spaces, I think having the kind of art that we're talking about really enhances the whole experience at the river. So can I have a motion, please?
Sure. I would move that the city council revise the description for the shop and dine Rancho Mirage program in the city's previously approved annual budget to provide greater flexibility in sponsoring special promotions at the river within the City of Rancho Mirage.
Second?
Okay, there's a motion, and a second, please vote. Okay, the motion carries 5-0. We've got two items to go. Does the council want to go ahead and do these items without a break, or do we want to take a break?
I already had one.
Is everybody okay? Okay, great. We'll move on to item number 15 then, which was Aqua Paza Financial Assistance Request. And Sean, are you going to be doing this?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can you just take a minute for one person to...
Bruce, I didn't know you were still here.
Yeah.
Yeah, she, we can, we'll continue.
Cindy.
Oh, it's Cindy. Oh, well, Cindy, well, okay. We'll take a five-minute break. Okay, we'll resume where we left off, and that was on item number 15, Aqua Paza Financial Assistance Request.
Thank you, Mayor Kite.
Everybody here?
Good afternoon, council.
Sean?
Yes, sir.
You're in charge here?
I'm, well, I don't know about that, but I'm going to present the report.
Okay.
So following the recent adoption of the Property Improvement Program, Jerry Keller, the owner of Aqua Paza at the river, expressed an interest in participating in order to assist in the refurbishment and rebranding of his restaurant. Aqua Paza is in its 10th year of operation, and Mr. Keller believes that a rebranding effort is necessary in order to attract a wider customer base and help stem the recent decline in sales at the restaurant. The current lease for Aqua Paza expires in September of 2014. Mr. Keller has identified the high number of retail vacancies adjacent to his restaurant and the numerous property-related issues that currently plague the river as problematic to his decision to invest a significant amount of personal capital into the rebranding effort. The improvements being proposed by Mr. Keller include those to both the exterior and interior of Aqua Paza. Exterior improvements are estimated at $94,000 and include a renewal of the entrance, upgrades to the terrace, and new signage. The interior improvements are estimated at $225,000 and include reupholstering banquets, new paintings, or new painting, excuse me, of the interior, new lighting, design enhancements, new tilework, renewal of the hostess area, and numerous upgrades to the kitchen space. The exterior improvements, as presented, would qualify for assistance through the existing Property Improvement Program with a $10,000 grant for signage, a $67,000 grant for other improvements, and roughly $17,000 in business owner funding. Because only exterior improvements are eligible for assistance through the program, staff brought the request for the interior improvements to the council Subcommittee of, excuse me, the Commercial Development Subcommittee, consisting of Mayor Kite and councilmember Hobart, for discussion. Three options for assistance were discussed. Please note that all options are conditioned upon Mr. Keller entering into a new 10-year lease for the Aqua Paza space. The Subcommittee endorsed an option that would provide an 80% loan, equal to $180,000, at 5% interest. The loan would be fully repaid in annual installments over five years, and this loan would be personally guaranteed by Mr. Keller. The first alternate option that was discussed is providing 80% of the cost to be provided as a straight grant, similar to the structure of the Property Improvement Program. The remaining 20%, roughly $45,000, would be the responsibility of the owner. The second alternate option that was discussed is providing a five-year loan for 80% of the cost, or $180,000, with the owner responsible for the remaining 20%. The loan would be forgivable, 20% forgiven in each year of the restaurant's next five years of operation. Of the three, alternate option two is the one that staff supports. Of the three, we believe this option has the greatest chance of resulting in a new 10-year lease of the rebranded Aqua Paza, and it requires the restaurant to remain open for the loan to be retired. Due to the concern related to the precedent that approval of this assistance could potentially set, staff believes it's important to identify the specific circumstances that exist relative to the request. One is the commitment to a 10-year lease within a large multi-tenant property. Another is the high number of vacancies adjacent to the restaurant, as indicated on the slide before you. The red indicates vacant space, the yellow is Aqua Paza, and the green are occupied spaces there. Yet another is the business owner's prior success and anticipated ripple effect that a potential departure would create. In reviewing prior history of business assistance by the city, specific assistance has been comprised of a variety of grants and waivers, loans, and sales tax and TOT rebates, with examples presented on pages 15-14 and 15-15 of the agenda packet. With that, staff request council consideration of one of the options as outlined, or the provision of an alternate direction to staff and Mr. Keller is present, in case you wish to ask him any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Are there any questions of staff? Iris, Dana? No? Okay. Scott?
I guess I think I'd like to hear your testimony first, and then come in with some ideas and thoughts.
Ted, do you have any questions of staff? Okay, at this time, we'll go to the audience for questions and comments, and I have a request to speak by, from Jerry Keller. Jerry, would you like to come forward?
I was going to say good afternoon, I'm going to say good evening.
Good afternoon. It almost is good evening. You've spent the better part of your day here, so you deserve a few minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Kite, city council members and city council and city employees. Happy 40th. I've been a resident of Rancho Mirage for 25 years, and Lulu and Aqua Paza has been around for almost 10. On the art affair, my wife's father is, I think, the oldest living artist in Rancho Mirage. He's 101 and 1/2, and every morning he is oil painting and does a terrific job, so we'll get him to maybe show his stuff sometime. Lots happened in Rancho Mirage over the last 10 years for Aqua Paza, a lot of good and some problems. We moved in almost 10 years ago. A couple of years afterwards, Cheesecake Factory came in, a major restaurant operation in the U.S. We compete with them, we compete with Fleming's, we compete with PF Chang, we compete with Yard House, all large regional and national restaurants. I think we do a pretty good job. We really work at it. The last couple of years, we've had problems with traffic diminishing. One of the things we loved about the river was the fact that we had a substantial amount of passersby coming into the restaurant. Three, four years ago, we used to keep 25% of our reservations on the weekend and during season open for people to come in. We always wanted to be able to service them. We don't have that problem anymore. Our volume's gone down every year for the last three years, and the potential for more spaces being leased at the river for the next couple of years, I hope is good, but it's going to take several years to come back. I'm very impressed with the current management at the river. I've been working with the asset manager, who I met personally in New York for the last several months on a new lease. We are interested in committing to a 10-year lease with all the financial engagements that requires and the personal guarantees it requires. He's very good to work with and very understanding of what I need, and I fully understand what he needs, because we do own some real estate ourselves, some commercial real estate, so I wear two hats in my life. We're very close to working out a long-term 10-year lease with all the proper guarantees to do it. We're anxious to work with the river and the City of Rancho Mirage to bring the river back. It's our goal, with the renewed lease and the renewed look and the name change to Aqua California Bistro, because Aqua Paza is, first of all, hard to pronounce, you can't spell it, and we're not an Italian restaurant. So the name change is important, the look is important. We have a gorgeous new logo that we've worked on, and we're ready to roll out. It ties in nicely to Lulu California Bistro in Palm Springs. We did, two and a half years ago, we opened up Lulu with Palm Springs City Blessing and some financial assistance from them. We repaid that within six months in extra taxes. We do what we say we're going to do, and I'm anxious to make the river again downtown Rancho Mirage. That's my goal, and I want to do it. I'd like a little bit of city help to do it, if I can get it. It's something that I think done together, we can create more value, more people in the river, and keep Rancho Mirage growing as we want it to. So that's pretty much it.
Questions from council? Questions down this side? Okay. Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, just a couple of quick things I just noticed. We do spend more money marketing and promoting Aqua Paza and the river than everyone else in that center combined. We need to, being an independent, we have to create an image and a value for the restaurant, competing against those monsters. So it's just another thing we do. Thank you.
Would you like to take a couple of minutes, and I know you've read the staff report, comment on the various options that have been discussed in the staff report and your opinion of those?
Be happy to. The 5% loan is appreciated. Money at 5% is always nice. It's not spectacular. It is available in different places, so I do appreciate that, and it's a nice thing to offer. The second alternate, I think, is fair, because we intend to be in business for more than five years. As I say, I'm signing a 10-year lease with all appropriate personal financial guarantees. That would work out very well. There was a discussion at one time of some type of tax rebates, kind of like the hotels get when they do build outs. That would be acceptable, too. I want to go ahead with this. It's a project that I'm excited about. We've gotten everybody ready to go with the appropriate design and construction, so basically, alternate to, some kind of tax help would work very well.
Okay. Any questions, comments down on this end? Scott?
Jerry, I'm just wondering if you can comment a little bit about why it's important to keep restaurants fresh and rebrand. I mean, you're a very experienced restaurateur, and you've hit a home run at Lulu's, and in the past, you've hit a home run with Aqua Paza. There would be some that would say Aqua Paza is doing a killer business. Why do you need to do any kind of a remodel right now?
One of the options is to just to renew the lease and do nothing at all. I think that would be a mistake. After a certain number of years, restaurants need a new look, need a new feel. We're revising our menu, not tremendously, but enough to make it a little more exciting. Being more in the marketing and sales end of the world than in the restaurant business, I bring a different perspective to the restaurant business. I'm not a chef, I can't cook, I can't eat. Everything I've read, everything I've seen tells me that it's time to change the name, number one, because it's always been a detriment, and number two, just to give it a more refreshed, lighter, brighter look for the newer crowds coming into this area. There's a younger group of people coming into the whole Coachella Valley, and they like a different look, and it's time we do it. So that's, it's just time. Is it a scientific research fact I can sit here and say, "Yes, this is what it is"? No. But it's something that should be done, and it's something that will work extremely well, and I think it'll be good for the river. I think if the river, and we intend to help the river market itself and have it grow, if we're investing in the river, if we're investing in a new look, if we're investing in the restaurant, I think it's going to encourage others to come into the river and take some of the vacant storefronts away.
I've heard you say a number of times how Lulu's in Palm Springs that you've opened has been such a phenomenal success, way beyond what you had originally envisioned. Is just closing Aqua Paza altogether an option that you're considering right now?
Every option's on the table. Lulu has been a spectacular success. It's just been totally lucky being in the right place at the right time with the right venue. And one of the reasons I went into Lulu where I did and when I did was because I appreciated the amount of walking-by passerby traffic that Aqua Paza had always enjoyed. And I knew that spot on Palm Canyon Drive, next to that huge Mexican restaurant, I, by some simple math, was able to figure out there were roughly a quarter billion people walking by that spot every year. And if I could bring some of them into an attractive restaurant, not everybody can eat Mexican food seven days a week, we could do some business. Well, we made it attractive, we made it interesting... We made it interesting. We priced it right. A lot of things came together. And so the interesting thing is that the passerby traffic that we're lacking now at the river was one of the reasons we went into Lulu. And Lulu is just eating up a lot of our time and staff. It's running twice our original projections. We had a double the size of the kitchen last year. And one of the discussions we've been having is, do we take the staff we have and take the top people from there and move them over to Lulu, run one restaurant without the, not aggravation, but the consistent problems of running good restaurants and keeping good help and maintaining an excellent face to the public and good food, and doing it in two big locations instead of one? But I love Rancho Mirage, and we love being here. We love living here, and I love the river, and I'm very impressed with the current river's management. They have an excellent, intelligent, young asset manager. In the past three years, they've had many asset managers, so this felt, this person is good, and he's here to stay, and I like working with him. And so I'd like to support him.
Just one last question, Jerry. We've done a lot of one-off deals with other entities like the Ritz-Carlton, et cetera, Desert European Motor Cars come to mind with their new Audi, et cetera. Why should we do a case-by-case assistance program with you and with Aqua Paza? What is it about your restaurant that makes you rise to the level of this special consideration that we're providing today?
Thank you for a nice-
It's okay to brag on yourself a little bit.
Thank you for nice, easy questions. It was interesting looking at the Ritz-Carlton build-out and the gorgeous restaurant they're putting in there. I know the city has helped support that and grow it, and I agree entirely. It's a very important part of the valley, and Aqua Paza had enjoyed business from the old Ritz-Carlton, when it was the Ritz-Carlton, and then when it changed names. So it'll bring people into us, too. We're a very unique case at the river. We are the big independent competing against five major national chains. They have deep pockets. Our pockets are not as deep. The volume that we've been enjoying in the last several years has gone down to a point where it's turning out to be not a very profitable, if at all, investment. And so one has to look at it from a dollars-and-cents point of view and say, basically, if the volume stays the way it is for several years or goes down because the spaces aren't rented and the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center is going to be coming in, and we know that's going to be revitalized, competing for storefront space. I know for sure that our expenses are not going to go down over the next several years. You have the Obamacare, which will be coming in, and we'll be happy to get for our employees, but it's not going to be inexpensive. Inflation's going to start to come in. Minimum wage is going to come in. We pay much more than minimum wage, but everything's going to change. So we, we're looking at a 10-year projection of increasing costs, and unless the river comes back reasonably soon, our volume is not going to increase as much as it should to cover these costs. So it's a, it's a black-and-white financial picture. And despite that, I think that we could work to make it work, and I think we can help the river come back. And as far as I'm concerned, I love this place. I love this town. I love the river. I'm very impressed with the new people running it. Carol Zale at the river is a terrific, terrific manager of the river. She works very hard. She's very bright. And the asset manager I'm working with, I'm extremely impressed with. So I would like to personally work with him for a long time, and that's why I'm willing to invest over 10 years and invest a good deal of money and personally guarantee it, whether we make money or not. So this help to redo the inside would help us to create a new look and not have to put too much capital out upfront to do it, or at least with, with capital upfront and the prospect of paying it back at 5%.
And the rebate program that's been proposed is something that you seem to really like. So if, if you fronted the money but then had a tax forgiveness for a period of time until it equaled that amount, that is an attractive option to you, which is-
The tax option is very attractive, and the five-year forgiveness is very attractive. Anything along those lines, I would love to work with. The loan at 5% is nice, but-
Not so much.
Yeah.
Jerry, I don't want to negotiate this whole deal with you while you're standing up there.
It's okay.
But I just wanted to kind of clarify the recommendation that the subcommittee made, where we proposed a certain amount of money for the 5%. Are you, are you uncomfortable with the dollar amount of the loan or the interest rate that we're proposing to charge on that money?
Well, in negotiating with the river, one of the discussions I had with them would be the fact that I had expected or hoped that the city would participate in some of the build-out with me. So as part of negotiations with the river on the new lease, there would be no TI money available. It's very simple. Either you get TI money and you get better rent, or you get no TI money and you get better rent for it. So it's always a balance between TI money and the amount of rent you pay. So the problem with the river is that the camp costs, the cost to run the river, are reasonably high for the space you have. But it isn't the amount of money, the amount of money's fine. I think the interest rate is, since I suspect the city gets 2% or 3% on their money if they invest it with somebody, and I'm personally guaranteeing this loan if I take that offer, 5% is, is kind of a high rate for it, and basically, I was hoping for more than that.
Okay, so you're okay with the concept, it's just the interest rate that you would like to see reduced?
Well, no, I would rather see the tax rebate of some type or some type of other, like, proposition, too. That would be much more acceptable. If I have to borrow the money to do it, I've just got to go back and reexamine everything that I've been looking at for the past half a year since I knew this lease renewal was coming up. Bear in mind, I had two five-year renewal leases, which I did not take because they were negotiated several years ago when business was good and going up before we went, before we lost 8%, 10% of volume, and they raised the minimum rent considerably, and those options did not work in today's marketplace. So I did not take two five-year options that I had. When I originally came in the river, we had two five-year options. Three, four years ago, I negotiated two more because I felt it was an intelligent thing to do. Now, I realize it wasn't that intelligent because businesses changed a lot, so I did not take it. So as of right now, I have 10 months, a little bit less than 10 months, to go on this lease. And my options are to fix it up and stay, do nothing and stay, look at other options. I have not been seriously considering lots of the other restaurants and cities that are talking to us. As you all know, I did, well, it's not important. We, we did look at some other locations in Rancho Mirage, and they would require too much to do. So I like the river. I like the location. I think we can do well there. I just like a little bit of help staying there. I'd like the council and the city to be with me in doing this. I think that you have money set aside next year for programs like this. I think it's going to be important that the city council and the mayor provide real incentives for businesses to come here and stay here and grow here. I know I, I work in another city, Palm Springs, and I see what they've been able to do. For 30 years, the city didn't do very much. The last five or 10 years with the change in city council, they've been very active. God bless you. It's been a very exciting part of the Coachella Valley, and it's been doing very well, and I'd like to see Rancho Mirage join that parade and really do very well. And I'd like to see the river be downtown Rancho Mirage again. That's my goal.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
I have one question. What is the ownership entity of Aqua Paza and who are the owners?
My wife and I own 100% of Aqua Paza. We are making Willie-
Is it an LLC?
Yes, it's an LLC.
You're 100% owners of the LLC that owns-
Yes, right.
And that's the organization, that company, is the company that would enter into a lease extension with Grosvenor?
Yes, there's a, since we're changing the name, we have a new LLC we just formed, and we'll be working in that, with the lease arrangement with that. But we are giving to our general manager, Willie Ryan, a 10% ownership in the restaurants, and to our chef, Arturo Casillas, and his wife, another 10%. We're giving away-
He deserves it, by the way.
I agree entirely.
He's a bigger traction.
We're giving away 20% of our ownership to these key individuals because of the kind of work they do, because we trust them and we love them, and it's because we believe it's the way we should do business. Over the last several years, they've always gotten a strong percentage of the profits. Now they'll have ownership. So this is the way we do business. We try and be fair and honest and decent and do the kind of work we do, and we try and please the public as well as we can. We try and be as charitable and as good as we can to the whole valley, and it's the way we like to live. So I'd like to continue it. I need a little bit of help from the city to do it, a little bit of encouragement. We will definitely pay it back, and we'll take care of things, and we'll do what we say we'll do. I think I can help the river grow. I think we can help the river grow.
Jerry, I think Iris has a question.
No, I actually don't have a question.
Okay.
But I do have a comment.
Okay.
And I, first of all, I have to congratulate you on bringing two of the most incredible restaurants to the desert that we have the honor of having. And I disagree with you that you are in competition with any other restaurants. You are not in competition. You have a unique following of people, and when people come into the, the river area, I would think most of the time, they are headed for your restaurant. And I know there have been weeks when we have eaten at your restaurant at least five times between breakfast, lunch, and dinner. But as we all know also, every business has normal wear and tear after 10 years, whether it's furnishings or equipment or plumbing or electrical. And of course, every restaurant needs refurbishing, especially after 10 years. Some of them need it more frequently than 10 years. Aqua Paza is one of the best-run restaurants. It is one of the most desirable. You've been awarded many awards through the years for, for your service of excellence and your food, and you really excel in both of those areas. Most of us that know you know that you had a tremendous loss with some of your employees that were suddenly not there anymore, and you're training new people. You're training new management staff, and that will certainly, I think, improve your business dramatically. I think that you have a fine reputation when it comes to catering, both out of Lulu's and from Aqua Paza.
Iris, can you speak closer to the mic, please?
And you are a fine restaurateur and a fine businessman, and whatever you touch is going to be successful and is going to flourish. And even though you mentioned about Lulu's, the first year you had to double the size of your kitchen, I think every restaurant would love to be in that position. It is just quite an amazing feat, and, and even in your first year of operation, that you were recognized as one of the top and most hip restaurants around. I think whatever you do is going to be wonderful, and I think we all up here would love to help you whatever way we can, and I think we all are reasonable people, as are you, and we will try to make a decision that is comfortable for everyone. And I thank you for appearing here, and I thank you for all the things you have brought to our wonderful city.
Thank you so much. Well, if I may just make a couple of comments. We have been investing consistently in upgrading Aqua Paza.
I know.
You've seen the sound invest, the sound deadening on the ceiling. It's totally fireproof and properly done. We've done new carpeting. I mean, we've been maintaining the premises extremely well, and it isn't that it's worn down. Its look is worn down, and its feel is worn down, and it's not an Italian restaurant, which is the way it was originally designed. We took over Prego Space, which was an Italian restaurant from Los Angeles that didn't make it, so it has an Italian feel to it. It's not. It's a California Bistro. That's one. Secondly, yes, we did lose a substantial number of employees, unfortunately, at each of our restaurants. A lot of key people, some of them have been with us since we started for nine and a half years. All our paperwork was proper. Unfortunately, their paperwork wasn't. So we, you're right, we have been retraining and rehiring, and we've just hired a new general manager to work at Aqua Paza full-time with our current managers. We're very happy about that. We have good programs to do even more. That's one of the reasons why, if we had more staff available for Lulu, it was one of the options we talked about. It's one I don't like, and it's one that I don't want to do. So I do appreciate your kind words. I think that Lulu being so hip is probably Barbara's fault. That's my wife. So she's, she's really smart and good. So thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for a fair hearing. It's almost dinnertime.
No, we're not done yet.
Okay, any other questions for me, from anybody? I shouldn't ask, I guess.
We'll, we'll come back to you if we have anything.
All right, I'll stay here. Thank you very much, everybody.
Next speaker, I have a request from Vern Coslin. Vern?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'll be very brief, based on the hour. I think we all know that Jerry and Barbara Keller have been outstanding citizens in Rancho Mirage and competed, contributed, not only from a business standpoint, but personally. I, I think it's important, as you said in the last item, the river is a key property in Rancho Mirage, and there are plenty of vacancies now. The last thing in the world the river needs, or we as a city need, is to have Aqua Paza close up or go someplace else. And I think it is clearly important, and I would very much support and encourage the council to approve this request and, and approve either option or alternative one or two, which I think make the most sense, as well as any tax incentives you can provide. It's a great operation. The river is great. Aqua Paza is clearly a premier destination restaurant to the river, as you've all commented. So thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask the speaker a question?
Vern, would you like to come back for a second? We have a question.
Between options one or two, why do you prefer them over option three?
Well, option three, to me, was the original loan.
Option three would be the loan.
The loan. I, I think option one or two, is, is, I think Jerry has said, I don't think the terms of option one are that attractive. He can get, he can get that kind of financing probably at the bank. He doesn't need the, the help of the city for that. I think what he's asking for is really the opportunity for the city to partner from an investment standpoint with him in this, in the transaction.
What do you think about the precedent of the city giving money to a person, to a company, to maintain a business rather than advancing money to bring in business to the city? I mean, isn't that a precedent that is of some importance?
I, I think it is, but I also think it's important for the city to do these one-offs as the city has in other transactions, whether it was helping Audi, whether it's the Ritz-Carlton, or many other investments we've made to either bring business in or help it. Maintaining a business is important, more important than trying to bring somebody else new. You've already got a business. If you lose that, it's going to take a lot more to replace it than it is to maintain it. So making an investment in retaining a business is, is, I think, far more-
The examples that you made of the Ritz-Carlton and Audi, both of them were bringing in business. The Audi wasn't there and wouldn't come there unless we did certain things to help them get that building, and so we did.
Audi was here. Audi was at Desert European. We helped them in the new building.
I'm talking about Audi. You mentioned Audi.
Yeah.
And I'm mentioning Audi, too. I'm just saying, there's a big difference in my mind for a city to be bringing, attracting some business into the city as- some business into the city as compared to the city being involved in making sure that every business in the city thrives and, and if they're having economic trouble, that we have to, have to or should, as a president, precedent, come to their aid. And I don't know if you're making that distinction or if you even think it's a significant distinction.
I, I understand the distinction. Uh, I, I think that it is, however, these are one-off transactions, and, and I think the city can and should evaluate issues that come before it. I think right now, retaining Aqua Pazza California Bistro at the river is extremely important. If you look at the, the, the diagram of all the empty spaces, the city is just trying to, to put art galleries into those spaces to improve it, to make it look less empty. What would happen if you took that green bar out of there and that whole thing was red? I, I, I think it is clearly, I understand what you're saying.
But you're, you're just saying because there's a problem, we should make a gift to a business to keep it there. I mean, a gift of private, I mean, public monies to make a gift? I mean, that is a major precedent, as far as I can see, for a business within the city already. You mentioned Desert European Motors, and that may or may not be a good example, but it, Desert European Motors has produced, on average, a half million dollars a year in TOT, in taxes.
Taxes, okay.
Sales taxes. I mean, but if there is an exception ever having been made, that's probably the only one that you can think of, and it's the only one that I'm aware of, that, that, and it so stands by itself. And, and I just can't, I just don't understand. I mean, you're a former banker.
Right.
Uh, I just don't understand the concept of giving money to a retailer to stay in business or improve his business in hope that he stays and in hopes that he improves it. Giving public money is just not something that, in my view, we should be doing to a private enterprise.
You created the Property Improvement Program. That was your idea, and we voted on it on September 3rd, and it is giving public money to businesses in Rancho Mirage to improve their properties. It's not a precedent that we're setting. It is a program that we have created, and the number of businesses have already come forward, and this is one more. Why are we not sticking within the guidelines that we approved on September 30th? It was your idea to create this, which is a great idea. It's, I think it's one of the most positive things that we've done as a council, and we're not creating a precedent, we're simply implementing a new program that we've put in place. And this program, the Property Improvement Program, clearly says that we have the ability at the council's discretion to, to award more than $100,000 to any business, but this is giving away public money to help existing businesses improve their property, and that's exactly what Jerry's asking for.
You're making it much broader than it is. It was never intended in that manner, and we can talk about it, but-
We, we were gonna talk about it because it is exactly what is in here.
You and I can talk about, we can talk about it. If you had a point for him.
Okay.
I mean, I, I don't think we should have to stay there for the hour.
Audi was already here, right? Audi was already here. They, they were already operating at that facility, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you, Vern.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? I have two jumping up at the same time, so you're the closest, you're on next.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. I am Eileen Eskey. I'm First Vice President, Ranch Manager of Pacific Premier Bank, and Jerry is a client of mine. Um, I know that there has been a lot of nice things said about Jerry and Barbara, and they're all well-deserved. We all know what an important part in their, in the community that they are. And I guess, rather than, um, I, I think everybody's said it very well, that we, we know Jerry is a man of his word. He is a success in, in what he does, and I just want to get up here as his banker and vouch for all of that. Uh, I definitely can tell you that he is a man of his word. And I just think that by assisting him with this, that it's going to be a win-win for the city and for the river, and I, I, I totally agree that there is a program that's available, and if somebody deserves it, it would be Jerry. I think he can bring a lot to, to the community.
Question for you. I don't know whether you can answer this or not, but what kind of a loan could you make today on the amount of money that Mr. Keller would like to borrow?
Well, that's, it's one and three quarters over prime, which is, that's, that's a, a very, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a decent rate, but it isn't, as Jerry said, a great rate, I mean.
Okay.
So you'd make him a 2% loan?
No. We wouldn't make him a 2% loan, but I mean-
How much is prime?
We, we typically start at prime and then depending on-
How much is prime currently?
Three, three and a quarter.
Oh, so, so you would give him a higher rate than we would?
Well, I, all I'm saying is that we start-
Two percent, two points over prime.
I didn't say that. I just said that prime is at three and a quarter, and typically as a commercial lender, what we lend to our businesses starts at that rate, and it goes up or, or is variable with that rate, depending on their strength and collateral and-
Doesn't go down, though, does it?
No. No, no, we're a for-profit institution, so, but anyway.
Thank you very much for being here today.
Thank you.
Carol Anseal from The River. Nice to have you here today, Carol.
Hello, thank you, City Council, Mayor, city employees. Um, I, I, I just want to say that, um, when you talk about being equal to everyone, and I know you have a difficult choice, and somebody else may say, well, where's my money? To me, the difference is, and I've often said it, Jerry Keller is like the Steve Wynn of Las Vegas. Where he goes, others will follow. And he didn't just put his name up on his restaurant in front of Highway 111 and call it quits. We have five leeches like that. He's not one of them. He roars with advertising. I always say, if you miss one of his commercials, sit tight because you're going to see another one in 30 seconds. That costs thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, and maybe, and I've seen it when these families come and they make his restaurant a destination, and maybe they say, oh, wow, this is beautiful. I want to live here. And the next thing we know, they're buying a house in Rancho Mirage. So maybe there's some justification there to look his way and give him some help and help the river and help the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak? Yes, come forward, please.
Good evening. City Council, mayors, uh, mayor and city employees. I wasn't planning on coming up here. I was only taking notes.
Your name and location, please.
My name is Sat Panesar. My company is Irvine Connect. We're a digital marketing rebranding agency. Uh, we recently sold our, um, app to the second largest social gaming company in the world, which is King.com. If you play, um, any phone, any games on your iPhone, King.com mostly owns half those games on your iPhone. We just sold one of our apps to them about a year ago, had a million downloads. So digital marketing is what my company does. As I mentioned earlier, I'm not here to, actually, I wasn't planning on actually speaking, just taking notes, um, after I read the article this morning about Mr. Keller's request to the city, and I thought it was very, very, very interesting. And the reason why is because Michael and Nicole Botello, which many of you may know, uh, the owners of Wally's Desert Turtle, um, I'm rebranding. I'm helping them rebrand and do marketing for them digitally, and as Scott knows, the power of, um, digital, it is going to be basically the future of what we're, how people find new businesses. And I'm not as eloquent as Mr. Keller, um, but he's absolutely right. The marketplace is changing, and no longer can we independence, and when I say we, I'm speaking on behalf of Wally's Desert Turtle, can we independents rely on just our local lore and our local reputation. We have to find new revenues from the tourists, from people who are just coming in for the weekend, from the, from the Southern California drive-in, uh, market, and everything that Jerry just said is affecting basically all our, what we call true independence. Jerry's been here for 10 years. Michael and Nicole have been at Wally's Desert Turtle since 78. They're celebrating their 36th year in, uh, a city that's 40 years old. I would, I would suggest that they obviously are a landmark. Our new branding for Wally's Desert Turtle is a California dining destination. Um, and the reason why I want to bring this up at this point is, I didn't know if it was actually appropriate for me to step up here, because I certainly want Jerry to get what he needs to keep Aqua Pazza basically set up for the next 10 years. It's not, it's not a case of just trying to make it through. It's, what do we need to do to rebrand, to attract, and to get the right clientele to make sure that he stays in business for another 10 years? And he has to basically attract a new generation of people who are finding businesses on their mobile phone, on their iPad, and on the desktop, and that's what we're about at Wally's as well with the rebranding. And so not only do I urge you to absolutely give Jerry what he's looking for, I agree with you, Mr. Hobart, in terms of, you know, is it a loan that we should be giving or should be giving any public money? But I also agree with Mr. Hines when he says the PIP program was actually put in place for that purpose. And I absolutely think that if we true independents in Rancho Mirage, it's, it's not a one-off anymore. Now it's like, what do we do for these landmark restaurants that we need to keep in Rancho Mirage, that we need to keep because it does attract new business? And I would suggest that if you, together, we're banding together, is I guess what I'm saying, we're banding together, that when you make this decision, that you think it's not a one-off, it's actually a collective of independents, true independents, that you're basically keeping here in Rancho Mirage.
Are you, um, are you advocating that if there was an arrangement of some kind, that this same arrangement be available for other restaurants such as Wally's or others that may, may want to do the same sort of rebranding?
You know, I think from, from a marketing perspective and a branding perspective, I don't think it's a, if you, if you give it to one person, give it to everyone, you as the council and you as the experts on taking Rancho Mirage forward to the next generation, you have to be selective in who you help out and who are the ones who actually attract business, who are the ones who attract other commercial entities, who are the ones that people, who act as magnets for people to always come, come. And I would imagine Wally's Desert Turtle is at the top of that list. And have we applied for the PIP as soon as, before November 15th, when, um, Mr. Carpenter comes through with his applications? Absolutely. We're gonna be there. We've got signage, we've already done some temporary signage with the new logos, and what I'm suggesting is you absolutely have to select the right entities that you need to support with this PIP program, and beyond the exterior, if there are certain aspects such as the Desert European or the Ritz Carlton that you feel, I need to go one step further with these people because it's the right thing to do for the future, that, now obviously, I'm leaving that to you, obviously.
Well, the PIP program does not restrict only to exterior.
I appreciate you clarifying that. I put down notes that it did for some reason, and not does it.
There's a misperception, but if you actually read it, there is no restriction that prevents you from doing interior improvements in the program that we voted on and put in place.
All right, terrific. Love it.
Thank you for coming.
You're very welcome. Thanks.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll come back to the council for a decision and, um, I think we'll, we'll have-
Okay, I would, I would like to make a recommendation that we kind of deal with this in two separate entities, one being the exterior funding, uh, if we, and, and one would be whether or not we want to help out with, uh, interior tenant improvements.
Okay, so the exterior, exterior program, we've already dealt with to a certain degree because we have, uh, in the staff report, I think, an allocation of funding for the exterior program, and the subcommittee did recommend funding for the subcommittee, for the exterior program.
What's the purpose of that?
May I just add, add one thing to that? Uh, by, by, by its very nature, we're gonna have to make that distinction. I do want, I do want to make the record clear, uh, that what Mr. Hines says I proposed and supported, uh, is distorted slightly, not quite correct. He says that it includes interior redesign. Uh, it was, if it, the language within the body does not say, uh, that it doesn't include interior design, but it was never intended to include interior design. Uh, to say now that it does is to stretch a point that doesn't exist. And I'd like to read slowly and carefully from the staff report at page 15 dash two, so we can see what staff knows and what they understood, and with those of us, uh, who were on the Commercial Development Subcommittee, Richard and me, uh, to see what he and I, uh, and the rest of everybody else who was involved in creating the, uh, the original language had in mind. On the fourth paragraph down, it starts with a variety of improvements. Okay, quote, "A variety of improvements to both the exterior and interior of Aqua Pazza would be part of the proposed refurbishment and rebranding effort. Because only exterior improvements are eligible for assistance through the city council's recently adopted Property Improvement Program, staff brought the business owner's request to the Commercial Development Subcommittee." Let me just make that clear so that we don't misunderstand, even though the language, you could argue that the language inside of the ordinance or inside of the, the language of the, of the, um, program, you could argue that it includes, uh, interior because it doesn't exclude it, but I just want to say it again, what staff wrote is what was the intent in creating the, the Property Improvement Program because, quote, "Because only exterior improvements are eligible," and that remains the case. So the point that Ms. Matric makes about dividing the two is essential. Uh, and if I may, let me simply, if we want to debate, maybe we should debate that first, and then I'll make other comments that I want to make.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Okay. Iris, were you through with your, uh, comment? Okay, thank you. Uh, Scott?
Great, thank you so much. Um, so what we're talking about here, of course, is legislative intent. Uh, the staff report is not the law. The staff report, uh, is not what we follow. It is a recommendation, and Mr. Hobart, you're the greatest guy at tearing apart staff reports and finding inconsistencies and challenging what's in staff reports. But what we've actually voted on and what is actually in place is the Property Improvement Program Guidelines and Application. And there are several things in here that would indicate very clearly, and it certainly was my impression, that there is no restriction whatsoever of what you can do. This is not the old facade improvement program. This has been greatly expanded, and that was the intent. And it says here in the opening line of that document that is law, "The primary purpose of the Property Improvement Program is to enhance the visual appearance, viability, and long-term success of the city's commercial districts." It also says where they have to be, and it certainly, uh, by geography qualifies. It also says then, under improvements, the, the key section, "That significant improvements of the physical appearance of a property will depend on the particular needs of the property in question," and that it will include but are not limited to, and then it lists a number of things, several of which could very much be internal improvements, like green improvements, for example. And then at the very end of the improvements paragraph, it says, uh, "That we will consider it based on the overall impact the improvements will have on the visual appearance of the entire property." So, uh, I appreciate that there is potentially agreement among the majority that this is what the intent was, but the reality is, is that's not what we agreed to, voted on, and what is in place right now. And if we need to amend that document through vote and legislative action, that's one thing. But right now, Mr. Keller's request absolutely qualifies for what is in place and what was voted on, and therefore it should not be broken into. I think the real issue is what amount are we going to approve? Because anything over $100,000 is at the discretion of the council, and that's a much more viable discussion than trying to parcel out whether or not he can replace light bulbs versus awnings. So that, that would be how I'd come back. That, that's just simply not the case.
I would say, um, the judge will overrule your objection if we had a judge.
That's unfortunate because you're doing damage to these businesses. You have another business right here that's saying- You have another business right here that's saying, "I don't need new awnings and paint. What I need is to refresh the look and feel of the experience for customers." If you're going to sit here as a politician and tell these restaurateurs who are experts in their field, "And I'm sorry, you don't know what you're doing," then I think we got a problem here. We need to listen to our businesses and our constituents and help them with what they need, not what we want to argue about as some technicality. The fact is, they're standing here saying, "To survive in this new era that's not the old era, I need to have a hip, cool, fresh look to my restaurant." And replacing the red, the windows is not going to cut it. So, you know, get over this technicality argument and let's listen to our constituents and help them be viable businesses.
Scott, thank you very much, and I appreciate, you've said it very well eloquently, that let's listen to our constituents. Let me tell you what our constituents say. As of a few minutes ago, our constituents have responded to the article in the Desert Sun to the extent that there are 24 comments as of now. Two are positive, 22 are negative. The comments basically say, "The city has no right to start spending money for tenant improvements, that this is the responsibility of the owner." I received telephone calls along the same lines before. We are the stewards of the public's money, and I accept that responsibility. I've also been a developer, I've been a banker, I've been a borrower, and I've been a lender. And over my history in real estate, never have I ever been able to finance tenant improvements. Those have all been my own personal responsibility. I've also been the investor in a number of restaurants. All of the money that went into TI work was either personal funds or conceivably the landlords. At no time was it ever financed by a municipality. I think that the, the intent, regardless of parsing the words, the intent is to provide a facade, an exterior. This program was originally designed for the 111 corridor. If we now start financing tenant improvements, we have a significant number of situations that come about. What prevents many other businesses, restaurants, et cetera, from asking the same request? The gentleman just said about Wally's. Now, all of a sudden, we're going to be judge and jury as to what qualifies. What happens if Mr. Westman comes and says, "I will rebuild the chart house, this iconic structure, if you will provide the money for the interior?" What about the crab pot that put in a fortune and the city did not finance a dime? What about the many restaurants or the many retailers that hopefully will come to the Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center, which is also extremely important to the city? Every one of those people are going to want assistance. It is frankly impossible to provide tenant improvement funds for everyone that wants it. I think that the Aqua Plaza is a fabulous restaurant, and the Kellers have contributed greatly to the community with their philanthropy and their business acumen. I applaud them. But on the other hand, we have a responsibility to our constituents and to our residents to be good stewards of the funds. And I personally feel that this situation does involve two different sets of financial structures, one for the interior and one for the exterior. I can hardly, I can heartily endorse the exterior, but I struggle greatly with the interior.
Ted, Ted. Can I just make, follow up on what Ted was saying? Um, in looking at a lot of the proposals that have been made by staff or by Jerry Keller, one of the issues that's a little bit different than what we're talking about right now has to do with tax credits and tax rebates. And I'm wondering if we could make money available to Mr. Keller if he went out and got the financing for the $180,000 from his own lender and he made the payments back so the city would not be on any hook for the principal payments. But then we did some sort of a tax rebate program, say over 10 years, which would allow him, in a sense, to recapture some of his principal. But we have done tax credit programs in the past, obviously, as we, we know. This may be a way to try and meet the needs of the businessman and at the same time not utilize the city's capital. The, the, the amount of the loan would stay with the city and in effect, we would be doling that out over 10 years and he, in a sense, would have the money from his home lender to, uh, to make the, uh, the improvements.
Now, is that different from a grant, just over a longer period of time? It's us giving money to somebody to stay in business.
Yeah. And, and we, we've done the tax credit rebates in the past.
Where?
We've been, uh...
You're going to say Desert European?
Yeah.
Yeah. Desert European stands off by itself. It's not...
But I'm just saying, here's an opportunity. If we wanted to do part of it or all of it, we have an opportunity where we could give him, say, a 50% tax rebate every year over a 10-year period of time. And it may be considered a grant, but I think it's also considered a way we've done financing in the past.
If I could just comment quickly, since in the staff report, we did attach examples of prior programs, just to clarify for the record, the Desert European deal is in there and it's already been discussed on whether that's a standalone or not. But just to clarify for the full council, the first item there, Country Inn Suites, Applebee's Restaurant, that was $400,000.
That was to bring them in or to keep them in?
That, that was in combination with both in that the TOT rebates were over a seven-year period after they had opened. So, it was $400,000 in rebates over a seven-year period for their operations.
Was that agreed to before they started business there or?
It's my understanding, I wasn't here at the time, but it's my understanding that the deal was, they built their facility and then provided that they remained in operation for seven years, they would get those rebates. Okay? So, there was no...
What year was that?
Uh, that was in 1998. So, the developer built...
Nobody here has that history, but...
Well, that's partly why we put this together, because the Subcommittee had asked for some information. Secondly, number five, the Electric Car Distributors, which was in 2000, in addition to outright grants during the project being started, there were $300,000 in quarterly sales tax rebates over a seven-year period. Obviously, if they didn't remain in operation, they would not get those rebates. The Patio, excuse me, Northern Trust Company, $150,000 loan, um, instead of rebates, but that was...
Zero interest.
Zero interest, but then it was forgiven each year, 10% per year over that remaining timeframe, assuming that they stayed in operation, and they did. Patios Plus was 30,000 in annual sales tax rebates over five years. Pavilion Supermarket received $625,000 in 1996 for a two-year operating covenant that was not paid back. It was simply for their time in operation. And finally, the last one that's on that attachment is the Standards of Excellence from 2003, where provided they stayed in operation for five years, they received a total of $400,000. So, that's just to clarify for the record what has been taking place in the past.
Let me comment about that. If you look at the, that particular analysis and you go down the line, uh, the Country Inn Suites in Apple Tree was frankly to get, have it built out and attract them. But take a look at the history of these. Country Inn, 15 years ago. Desert, 12 years. Desert European, seven. Desert Square, 12. Electric Car, 13 years. Northern Trust, 11 years. Patio Plus, 12 years ago. Pavilion, 17 years ago. Rancho Las Palmas, 13. Rancho Mirage Plaza, 12. Standards of Excellence, 10. That was for exterior mainly. That was a different time. That's when redevelopment funds were also available to the city. Uh, so although, yes, this has been included in the staff report, frankly, I think it's somewhat misleading and distorted.
And I do too.
Ted, can you address my, my question to you regarding the issue of tax rebates and how that fits into your scenario?
Well, I'm not sure about that. Again, I think that, uh, essentially what Dana said is accurate. What is the difference between that and basically a loan that's being forgiven? It's still basically a grant. I mean, a grant is a grant is a grant.
It's based on performance to a certain extent because you're taking a certain percentage of the sales tax and you're not forgiving a debt or you're not taking on a debt. And so, I think it's a little bit different. And I guess the issue is, if we wanted it to work, we could make it work. And if we don't want to make a loan for interior, we're not going to make a loan for interior, regardless of how we do it.
But guys, you approved the property improvement program on September 3rd, which is a grant program, a multimillion-dollar grant program that gives money away to businesses with no expectation of repayment. Did you not read it when you voted for it or have you changed your mind since?
It's exteriors. We haven't changed our minds at all. That was always intended to be exteriors.
Ted is saying is that it's absolutely wrong to make grants to anybody. That's what I hear you, that's what I hear you saying.
No, that's incorrect.
And we want, we do want people to ask...
No, I'm all for making, no, no, that's, you're misquoting me.
People didn't participate in the facade improvement program to a significant level. It was not a real popular program. We were just rolling it out. We weren't really getting a lot of responses to it. So, that's why we expanded this property improvement program to be more things than just facade improvement.
Outside, exterior, that's what we expanded. It used to be, it could only be the facade. Now, for Mr. Keller's business, the Aqua Plaza, it includes all of the outside, which includes the area where seating is and the covering for seating, all of the outside would be included because we passed the new ordinance, not an ordinance, a resolution program. Because we passed it, it's not just for the door that he wants to put or the sign he wants to put up. It can now also be used for the exterior seating and changing that around. We did make that change, but never was it intended by anybody to be authorized...
Correction, it was intended by me and I voted for it because that was the purpose.
You forgot to say it. It may have been on your mind, but you forgot to say it.
I didn't say it. It's in, I read through it at that time and said, "This is pretty broad. Awesome."
Okay. Well, then, then you were wrong.
Nobody didn't.
So, you had it in your mind one way and everybody else had it, including staff. They wrote it, I just read it to you from the staff report. Staff report makes it clear.
Okay. I think we need, we are back to where we started this discussion with...
I think we just have to decide, are we going to do option one, two, or three, and three being the loan, and then we can go through that.
Iris, you were talking about breaking us into two parts. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay. So, would you want to describe what your proposal was again?
Well, I think that we need to separate them as far as what we're going to actually fund, as far as the exterior, and if we're interested in funding or making a loan on anything on the interior. I think that there's a $70,000, um, funding opportunity that we could grant if we wanted to, uh, say, "Okay, this is, we agree with this $70,000 and we will provide that for your exterior improvements." And...
Which is the 70,000? I thought it was a little bit more than that.
Was it 77,000? Is that it?
Yeah.
Yes. That's the 77, which comes from the 80-20 split.
Right.
77,200.
And that comes from the original amount of what, 94, done on an 80-20 split?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, why don't we, unless everybody objects to doing it that way, why don't we break it down, um, in the exterior versus interior?
Okay. I would, I would move that, um, if that's okay to make it a motion.
You can make a motion.
That we provide, uh, funding of, in the amount of $77,000 for exterior improvements at, uh, the restaurant.
Second.
Aqua Plaza. And where's the money to come from?
The money would be coming from, I believe, the general fund.
Well, it's the fund we've set aside. It's the...
The fund we set aside.
Economic development.
General Fund Reserve.
Economic development.
Right. The property, yes, for the property improvement program.
Right.
Okay. So, there's a, there's a motion and a second. Does everybody understand the motion? Then we'll vote. And the motion carries 5-0. And Iris, do you want to continue on?
Well, I think that that's a whole nother issue and we have to determine...
That is a whole number another issue. So, do you want to continue or...
I, I, at this point, I think when we're concentrating on the discussion of how we're going to do, treat the interior portion, whether we want to make it a loan, whether we want to make it a grant, whether we, however we want to do it, now is the time that we need to decide.
Okay. What would you recommend?
Uh, it's a tough decision. Um, I, I would like to provide a certain amount of, uh, funding in the way of a loan at a reasonable or something that we can all agree upon, that would be, uh, an actual loan with a payback and at a reasonable interest rate that we could all live with.
Okay. And so, that was the proposal that the Subcommittee made.
Right.
Is that what you're recommending?
That's, that would be favorable to me.
At that interest rate?
And perhaps we could make it at a, at a 4% interest.
Sure.
And I think most of us could live with that very comfortably. And I don't know if, if Mr. Keller can or not, but, but I think that this way, at least, we're trying to make it a little bit more desirable.
I would second that if that's a motion. I would second that, but I would want to add a, a finding that we would have to make.
Okay. Well, let's, um, you've made a second. Let's see if there's any discussion on this and then we'll come back to your finding.
Can we hear from Mr. Keller again? I think Mr. Keller wants to speak again.
Okay. We're going to go back into public testimony. That's okay with everybody?
All right. Look, I'd like to clarify a couple of things, folks. Number one, um, I had the same discussion in Palm Springs with the money they gave me for Lulu. There were a number of comments very similar in mydesert.com about the city giving us money. I saw the comments this morning. First of all, I don't even know if they're Rancho Mirage residents. Number two, there's always a group of people who act like that. So, yes, not everybody's happy about it and the ones who aren't happy about it make a lot of noise, just like if someone unfortunately gets a bad meal, a lot of people hear about it. When we continue to provide good food, not enough people talk about it. That's just the way it is. Secondly, when I came to a discussion with Mayor Kite and then also with, with Dana about doing this, um, I had seen that new proposal for the PIP and I also was confused about whether it was only for facade or exterior or interior. Now, I appreciate and I certainly thank you very much for the okay for the exterior money. That's, we really appreciate that. So, I, honestly, I don't want to or need to come here hat in hand. That's not why I'm here. It isn't the money. I think it's past the money. I think it's a principle of working with businesses who are struggling to stay and grow and change as we should. I don't know the, the social promoter, whatever he is. I don't know him from anybody. I was surprised to see him get up and I was pleased to hear him say that, yes... I was surprised to see him get up, and I was pleased to hear him say that, yes, we damn well better change or we're going to die. That's just the way the world is. I'm glad he's working with Wally's. I think that's a good restaurant, and they need a different image, and they need a different feel, and I, I hope he works out really well. I like him a lot. We looked at his restaurant to move Aqua over to there. It was too big a deal. It would be another Lulu, and I just am not willing at this time in my life to make that kind of commitment. I am 78. I'm a young 78, and I love what I do. Barbara loves what she does. But I'm not sure that I want to go for another 10 years on a lease in a restaurant that's going to lose us money. So I thought the city could help me with the build out and at least become a partner with me to do it, and that's really why I did it. It isn't that we don't have the money to do it ourselves here. That's not, that's not the problem. It's a business proposition. When I negotiated, and when I'm negotiating with the river, with this new asset manager, one of the planks that I went with him on was there would be no TI money necessary from him as a landlord so I could get a better, long-term, 10-year lease. That's the deal that I've been talking to him about. We have property in Salt Lake City. We put in a charter school. We put out a lot of TI money, which we're getting back in rent over the next five years, and this happened two years ago. So I know the business, and this is a business proposition. I'm trying to keep my emotions out of it because when you make an emotional decision, you very often make a bad one. And as I say, I love the city, I love the river, I love everything about it, I love this restaurant business. Practically, we would be better off with one big restaurant with the staff we have and concentrating all our efforts and best staff in one place. That's a business decision. Secondly, I don't need to take on 10 more years of financial involvement and guarantees with the river to be in a losing proposition that's possible if the river doesn't come back the way I hope it will. And I'd like to help it. So emotionally, I'm deeply involved in this. On a financial basis, believe me, I did not come here hat in hand to try and get some money from you folks. I don't need it. It's a business proposition, and I hoped the city would help me with the business proposition. I hope the city would be even more creative with other businesses, other people, other companies that want to come into Ranch or Mirage, that may want to lease a store in the river and may need some kind of unique help to do it. You have $9.5 million to spend, guys. I want to see it spent creatively, on a case-by-case basis. You're smart business people. You've been around. Yes, you can conserve the city money all you want, and it's going to be here for a long time, and it's a nice city, and you've got plenty of tax revenue coming in, and there'll be a few more houses built. But unless you get aggressive and intelligent with how you're going to get more businesses into this city, we're not going to have a hell of a lot here. You have a shopping center in the river that has had seven asset managers in three years. This latest guy is terrific, and he's here to stay. He's moved his family to Philadelphia. I want to help him. I like him. He's a terrific young man. I love Carol Zale. She's a terrific manager of the river. But I've got to tell you guys, you're going to have the same thing with Rancho Las Palmas Shopping Center. This city and this city council has to become very creative, very smart, work with the hotel people. You have some great hotel people in this city. I was on a, I was on a, a meeting with them the, the other morning out in, in the Westin, and we talked about setting up a city marketing council and a hotel council like they have in Palm Springs. The hotel people in Palm, in Palm Springs make things happen, and they make them happening with this, they make them happen with the city council and with the mayor, and they all work together, hand in glove, to bring that city back. Marilyn cost a ton of money to bring downtown, and the key business person, Harold Matzner, who finances a lot of stuff and runs the Film Festival and Spencer's and a lot of other things, was dead against it. Well, they went over him, and he now says it's the smartest thing we could have done. We got Proposition J passed where we got the city, who, people who live in the city to pay 1% more in taxes so they could redo downtown Palm Springs. That was a hell of a thing to do. But it was done by the hotels, it was done by the independent business people. I was on that group because I was a new businessman in Palm Springs. I was very impressed with them, and the mayor and the city council were all for it. So my message to you folks is very simple. This city council and this mayor have to be creative and strong and interested in bringing this city retail back. You have a river that you have a good manager for, they, they just spent half a million bucks to fix the water of their own money. That's not money I'm going to pay them back in, in, in any kind of a tithe or anything. They're good, and they're going to need help, and they're going to need help making the river look better, and maybe they'll need help with some big tenant coming in who needs some help to build something out inside. I don't know. But I think you've got to be prepared to do more than you're doing and not just stick to what could be the letter of the law. I just think it's a serious mistake for the city to make. So again, just to finish this off, there's always going to be naysayers about the city doing anything for anybody. That's the way it is. Secondly, I didn't discuss this or do this in order to get the money to do this. I did it because I thought it was a good thing to do, and I was able to work on a better lease because I didn't need TI money to do it. Not a lot of TI money. I'm putting some money in this too. But I'm going on the hook for 10 years with a 10-year lease and personal guarantees for that lease, and that's a big deal. That's a lot of money. And I'd hope the city would help me out a little bit to create the kind of atmosphere that I need to make it the kind of place that people really want to come to for the new group coming in, in this community, and to make it a better place to be. So my message is, guys, I'm just looking for a little bit of encouragement, and that's just plain and simple. So thank you for the chance.
Thank you, Jerry. We have a motion. We have a second. Iris, can you clarify the amount of the loan that you're talking about?
77,200.
How much was it?
77,200.
No, no, the, the second, the second one.
Yeah. The...
180,000.
180,000.
180,000.
Okay. The, the question I have is, are we better off risking 180,000 on a long-term loan or participating in a tax rebate program where we have no risk?
I totally agree with you, Mayor. I think that, and the full amount is actually 225,000. That 180 is an 80, is the 80%, 20% that comes with this PIP program. But if we're throwing out that window, then we need to look at what the actual cost is of the interior improvements, which is 225,000. And I would support you in a, in a move to basically do a 10-year tax forgiveness program and equal annual installments of that 225,000, and be that the way that we resolve the interior piece. And I'm also curious from Isaiah, what the, you know, we haven't heard from our finance guy.
Well, nobody's asked him a specific question, and he's not a member of the council. So why don't we, you want us to go down the line and ask everybody?
No, I'd like to ask Isaiah, what is the impact of?
It's a policy issue. It's a policy issue, and I'm sure he's not going to want to get involved in it.
The tax rebate is, has a financial impact, and I'd like to hear from the finance director as a member of the council.
I did talk with Isaiah this, this morning about the various alternatives, and he does have some information that might be useful to the council in making the decisions. So I say, if you'd like to just go over those issues that we talked about or not, it's up to you.
I would, I would. I think my thoughts may be helpful to the council when they make their decision. My role here with the city is obviously the finance director, and so I approach this basically as a business decision for the city. So whether it fits under one program or another, or we create a new one, I think is a little bit out of my realm. But what I really focused on was, what's the right business decision here for the city? And so when I look at it, because sales tax information is confidential, I can't give you the actual numbers, but maybe I'll use a different example that I hope that people can understand, is what we're talking about here is, would be like using $1 of taxpayer funds to invest in a business, and what the city's going to get in return from that business staying in our city is $6. And so what the city gets is a net profit of $5. So, you know, I hear Mr. Keller, and I can see his numbers, and I can tell you that from a business perspective, if we are able to go to our residents and say that the city will make $5 off this deal instead of losing out on 6, I think that's worth discussing, and I think that the council would probably be pretty safe in saying that no resident is going to come complain about that deal. There is something that complicates this factor, and it's, are we setting a dangerous precedent when you look at doing this type of thing for just one business? And for me, because that played into the business decision, you know, my thought process was, okay, well, let's look at the circumstances that we're faced with, with this decision. And the key points that I focused on here is, we have a reliable sales tax history because Mr. Keller and Aqua Plaza has a 10-year history with our city. So I looked at that 10-year history, and, you know, you've heard the comments, he's, it's a very successful restaurant for us. The other item that I considered was the location of it, is it's at the river. And for me, I consider that the downtown. I love going there with my family. I love walking around. My son really likes the water feature there. And so I think as a city, we've already invested in the river through the redevelopment agency, and so that just plays in with the city's original investment, is this important location that does have high vacancies. The other thing that I considered in my business decision was, how long is Mr. Keller talking about staying in our city? And it's a 10-year lease. So to me, that was significant. That's 10 years of sales tax revenue that is now going to flow into our city. So if another restaurant can approach us that really faces these same thought processes, and they want our help, you know, that, I think that we should be willing to listen, and especially as we look at economic development into the future without a redevelopment agency, I just would hate to see one of our really premier restaurants leave the city because we weren't willing to invest that $1 with them.
May I respond, Mr. Mayor? This is not an issue simply of profit and loss to the city. And you may assume that the company will be there 10 years. Somebody else may assume it. He's 78 years old, he's already told us that he's tired, and I can surely understand that. This isn't an issue of, do we make money from it? If we adopted that kind of reasoning, every single business in this town would come to us and give us a similar process. Hey, we're going to leave if you don't give us a grant, and you have to look at it this way, you're going to get TOT from it, or you're going to get sales tax from it, and therefore there's a profit to you. That's not what we're here to do. We're here to decide a very practical question. And that question is, is it appropriate to spend city's tax revenues to assist a private business establishment already within the city? Is that appropriate? And that is the issue, and you can phrase it, Mr. Mayor, as a tax rebate. He can phrase it as a profit to the city. All of that stuff doesn't mean anything when you get down to the issue that we have to decide. Do our residents want us to spend tax revenue for the first, second, and 500 businesses that come in here with an argument or a threat that they're going to leave? In your argument, Isaiah, you even postulate the potential that he will not stay at the river because we don't give it to him. If that is a threat, and Jerry's been very careful not to make that threat, but if he made the threat, that would close the door, as far as I'm concerned. Anybody that wants to negotiate like that is not going to negotiate with me. I'm going to vote against you, no matter what. Jerry's not made that.
He's not making a threat.
He did, no. Jerry, Jerry's not, but Isaiah postulated the situation of him not renewing the license.
I think that's an alternative that you have to look at.
Well, that, just a second, I'm...
Right?
No, it's not. It's not.
You don't have to look at the different alternatives?
That's the business decision. If you're a businessman and you enter into a lease, you've got certain responsibilities. You've got to pay the lease. You hope you're going to make a profit. It's not our obligation to help him make a profit. It's our obligation to decide appropriate spending of public funds. And all of the rest of this stuff is just superfluous to that issue. And the fact that we're going, the fact that we're talking about making a loan to him at a low interest rate is not quite a violation of that. That's as close as we can get to the line of doing some good for, for this business. And a loan at 4%, the bank just, the best the bank would do was 5 and 1/3 or 5 and 1/2 or whatever it was. We can make, we can do something for him because we care, because the Killers are good people. Everybody is like...
I think the important thing is, he's a businessman in our city. Whether he's a good person or not, he's a businessman in our city.
Absolutely right.
And he's coming to us to ask for help.
He's coming to us, asking us to make, to make a gift of public revenues, and that's the decision that we have to make. Will we or will we not set a precedent of making a gift of public revenues to a business that is already in the city and wants to stay in the city and asks us for assistance?
We made that decision on September 3rd.
And you can point to that all you want. You know it doesn't mean anything about the interior. You know it, you're just arguing it, and I'm tired of that argument.
No, I'm not making that argument. I'm making an argument to answer the policy question you just said, is should we use public dollars as a grant to businesses already in the city? And the answer is yes.
On the interior.
You voted for it, you voted for it, you did, you did, and I did on September 3rd to give grants up to 100.
That was the exterior program. Why are you, why are you not putting in the word exterior?
Okay, the exterior program. It's a grant of public dollars to assist businesses in the city.
And why did we do it? And why, the reason was, we wanted the corridor to be good-looking, we wanted it to attract people and to attract business.
We did it for the economic viability of our city, Dana, not to make it look pretty. It's for the economic viability of our city. That's why we put the grant program in place that gifts public money to businesses. We already decided this. We're just now deciding how much and what it can cover. But we decided a long time ago, Ted and Dana, that we would give grants of public money to businesses to help them.
To exterior, for exterior, it was just, all it was, was an enlargement of the exterior program. That was it.
So we've answered your question.
Nothing else.
Okay, I'm going to ask Ted Wild if he'd like to make any closing comments before...
Well, only, only from this standpoint, again, my struggle is, is, is the overview that Dana expressed from a standpoint of, is this appropriate from the standpoint of our responsibility in handing out public money? And, and it is right on the line. I mean, when you, when you get with something like TI, irrespective of Scott's position regarding this document, I still feel it was an exterior motivation and document. However, getting past that, I struggle with the fact that this is a, an interior loan, but I could probably get over that. I would go along with making a loan that was repaid back to our residents over a period of time. I could justify that because, again, I can see what's going to happen here. We're going to be in a situation where tomorrow, the next day, the day after, there are going to be people coming to us and say, will you loan us money under the same terms and conditions? And we better be prepared for that. But in this case, I've known Jerry a long time, 25 years. I respect and admire him. He's been a credit to the community, and that causes me, you know, great joy. And of course, I also feel conflicted from the standpoint of not giving him everything that he wants. I can understand a certain degree of disappointment, but I would hope that Jerry would understand our responsibility. But I would hope that Jerry would understand our responsibilities as public servants. And although he feels that we have to be more aggressive and creative as a council from an economic development standpoint, we still are stewards of the public's money. And that's our job. And I feel that the, the proper thing to do is to provide Jerry with funds for the exterior of his restaurant that are a grant from the city and to structure a loan for the interior.
Okay. Okay, doesn't look like I'm going to get very far on the tax rebates. Ted, would you be willing to change the interest rate on the loan to 2%?
Sure. I think the interest rate is secondary to, to the concept.
Iris, would you accept that as a change to your motion?
That sounds fine with me.
Dana, would you accept that on their second?
I would.
I have a question for clarification. Is this based on the subcommittee's recommendation, which is to provide an 80% city loan, which is $180,000, that's 80% of the $225,000 for the cost of the interior improvements, at 2% to be fully repaid in annual installments over five years? The loan would be conditioned upon the business owner entering into a 10-year lease at the river?
Could we make that a 10-year loan since he's got a 10-year lease?
No, he won't be the... How about seven years?
Well, yeah. I think anything to reduce his costs.
If we're going to go down to 2%, going out seven years is, is something that could impact us negatively with respect to our rate of return of our portfolio. I mean, five years is close enough. I mean, I don't really think we should extend it because it becomes, again, if we lose money on it, then we're giving away public funds.
Yeah, but we don't know whether we're going to lose money on it.
The longer we go out, the greater that likelihood is. Rates aren't going to get any lower than they are now.
But at 2%, we're still going to be making more than what we're making on our portfolio right now.
Maybe a what, a half point or something? Can you answer that with a yes or no?
Yes.
Right. A half point or so.
Okay. So it's an unknown factor. I'm just thinking that if we could tie the loan to his lease, it all works together. It gives him a little bit of a break as far as the cost. And maybe he doesn't even want to go that way. He's already said he can do his own.
It's up to him to decide. We just have to make our, our own decision.
So Iris, you agreed to the 2% change?
But, yeah, you did. You sure you did. But here's, here's, there's a little bit more that's got to go into this. One, what I think has to go into it are two points. The second point being...
What's the first point?
Well, I'll give the first one in a second.
No, you give the first one first.
You don't know which one I'm calling first.
Well, I wasn't even finished.
As, as a, as a condition precedent to the city making a loan of money to any private business entity, we'll stick with this one, which seeks such a loan, the council must require adequate security, collateral, and personal and business guarantees to the written satisfaction of the city council's commercial development subcommittee or to, and to the city's finance director and to the city's legal counsel. The only reason I didn't say to the city council was we, we don't want to have to make him wait for a city council meeting. So we've got to have, that's got to be implicit or explicit within the motion. And the other condition is this, to keep, to keep us from being swarmed with requests for loans by everybody and his brother in this city, we have to have some special reason why we're doing it for Aqua Plaza. And I think we meet these criteria that I'm about to spell out. I think we can do that. But that gives us an armor plate in the event other people come to us asking for loans. Except we can't do it because it doesn't meet the special criteria which we require. And that's this, as a condition precedent to the city of Rancho Mirage making a loan of money to any private business entity, including the Aqua Plaza restaurant and its owners, the city council finds that the business under consideration is of considerable significance to the city's image, reputation, and economic well-being, and that the consequences of denying the loan would subject the city to potential substantial economic harm. So that's a finding.
When do you make the first judgment? Read the first paragraph again. You're asking for, for some sort of a judgment to be made on that person's business?
We, no, we...
You're making this finding now.
Right. We have to make a finding now in order to make a loan like this.
But you're saying this will keep us from loaning money in the future?
No, I'm not, I'm saying it'll keep us from maybe 80, 90, 95% of the loan requests that we might get. We can't, we can't be setting a precedent, even on a low-interest loan, we can't be setting a precedent that every business in town will come to us and say, you did it for him, I want it for me. I want you to make me a loan. And if you don't, you know, I may not renew my lease or I may leave or I may go broke.
Can we make that decision on each case individually?
Yes, yes, we have to. I'm saying we have to. But on, including this case. And I, and the criteria is that we find that the business under consideration is of considerable significance to the city's image, reputation, and economic well-being. And I think that he meets that.
Well, but how do we make the judgment on any other business that comes in?
And that the consequences of denying the loan, let me get good language here, may cause the city substantial economic harm. That's just a finding that we're making if we make it. And we don't have to investigate it. Most of us know quite a bit about this company. We know about Jerry's reputation, Barbara's reputation. But we have to have some...
How do we evaluate that other company that comes in?
When they come, we'll see how we evaluate it. Depends on who it is.
Well, yeah, that's why it seems kind of superfluous to put this whole...
Well, I can tell you this, I'm against anything without findings. I just make that clear. I'm not going to be in the position of making a loan and setting a precedent with my vote that anybody that comes in here can get this loan without showing something of significance to the city that gives us the motivation to keep them. Ms. Zale, Carol Anne, stated a good reason. We want the river to continue to flourish. Jerry's talked about it. We've all talked about it. That's something of great significance to the city that not every business can claim. And that's, I think, important for us to make it clear to the public whose money we're spending, that we're not just saying, okay, come to us, we're going to become a banker of 2% loans.
So what I hear Mr. Hobart presenting here is that he believes that there was sufficient evidence and sufficient, and testimony that was submitted today to justify making these findings to distinguish this particular applicant from other applicants. So as other applicants come forward seeking the same sort of financial assistance, he's suggesting that you make these sort of, these same findings. It may be based on different circumstances, but the same findings need to be made to distinguish this kind of financial assistance.
That's exactly what the intent of my motion is.
But the one question I have is that the subcommittee's recommendation included a requirement that the business owner enter into a 10-year lease at the river. Is that part of this?
Well, is it 10 or nothing? Or is there... How about if we said at least a, a seven-year lease?
No, no, it's, it's, it's a problem.
Okay. Okay, so we'll... Thank you, Jerry.
Okay, any other questions regarding the motion that's on the floor?
The motion includes the, the findings and the security conditions.
Basically, it's a, it's a loan for $180,000.
For, or five, five years or 10 years?
Five. Five years with a 10-year lease.
Or we'll say seven. I, I, no, I don't want to go to seven. Seven is just too far out. He can come back and make a...
Can you make those type of payments in a five-year schedule? Are, is that principal and interest even doable with your cash flow? I mean, if we're putting a loan in place that he's just going to reject?
That's okay, Jerry. We're, we're good on that. We're good. Okay. We don't, we want to, don't want to keep on running you back and forth here. So $40,000 a year is going to be your principal and interest.
Yeah, that's not a problem. So is that, is that for the 225 or the 180 or what?
That's the 180. You got the 77, too, as a grant.
Okay. And then the 180 is...
So you got about 250 total.
Yeah. All right. So I have to put in a chunk of money for the, from the 180 to the interior upfront right now. All right, well...
You're going to have to put up about 100 if you get 250 from us.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'd prefer seven years and I'd prefer the 225. In fact, I prefer 10 years and 225. That would, that would make it very doable. It would tie it into the lease and...
Well, how about, how about, how about if we do it this way? For the first five years at 2%. Thereafter, for the next five years, if, I'm just thinking out loud, you're the mathematician on this kind of stuff, Ted. But the next five years at, for each year at, say, 3% over prime, because if prime goes up, then our interest rate goes up. Something like that. If you, to extend it, to extend it beyond five years, it's got to have an escalation clause in it.
But you're getting too, you're getting too complicated. Why don't we do the 225 at 2% for five years?
Jerry, I personally feel that you had agreed to put skin in the game if, if the city made a loan that you were going to invest 20%. I don't think it's proper that that not be fulfilled.
Okay. Just an, just an idea.
Okay. Okay, there's, thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate it. We're within 10 seconds of saying you can go home, okay?
I have to get Barbara's father dinner.
Okay. So everybody clear on the motion? 180, 2% five years. Does everybody understand that? Okay.
With the findings and with the security.
Yes. Would you please vote?
Can you give me that?
And the motion carries 5-0. And we'll go on to the very last item of the day.
Why wasn't that the last one?
This is the approval of funding for the Palm Desert Explorer Program. And I think this is...
The library.
And the library too. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, there's also a library.
You have police and library left.
What?
You have police and library left.
Yeah. Okay, so Randy, were you going to discuss the Palm Desert Explorer Program?
Kim, go ahead.
Okay. Kim, you want to take that?
Yes, I will. First of all, I would like to have council be introduced to Deputy Vasquez. He has been sitting out here patiently. I felt it important that at least Deputy Vasquez appear before you. He is a hands-on deputy assigned to the Palm Desert Explorer Program. And after I give my brief presentation, he will be available to answer any questions. And as mentioned in the staff report, we feel that this program will have some good opportunities for our students at the new Rancho Mirage High School.
Deputy, would you like to make a comment?
I'll make it as brief as I can. My name is Deputy Mike Vasquez and I worked with the explorers for four years out of the Palm Desert Station. I'd just like to say we appreciate the support that the city of Rancho Mirage has given to us over the last few years. Again, I personally have worked with children, I shouldn't say children, I was asked not to, with teens between the ages of 14 and 20 and 1/2 for the last several years. The impact that it's, it's given the community specifically and can afford that same opportunity or continue to afford that opportunity is that of hope. Kids nowadays need an outlet. And a lot of times, the outlet seems to be in negative light and ones that we aren't, aren't as favorable. For us specifically at the Sheriff's Department, we provide a lot of opportunities for kids not only going into the field of law enforcement, but those looking to do community service and build their resume for colleges and further education. Something I could say that I'm proud to, to share with you guys is over the last four years that I've been involved with the Explorer Program, we have had four individuals join the department. So they are now becoming productive members of our society and our community and in turn creating a generational effect, as we all know, is, is the hope to see our children flourish, just as we have, and even take strides and leaps and bounds further than we could imagine. The Explorer Program now has the opportunity to be instilled and take more effect in the city of Rancho Mirage because of the new high school, Go Rattlers. So working with Deputy Decker, who's the school resource officer, we are providing that opportunity and another outlet for kids to have an experience with the Sheriff's Department in a positive light with law enforcement and create those opportunities to not only further their educations, but further themselves as individuals and in turn bring back a positive lighting to the community.
Okay. Thank you for being here today.
Sure.
It sounds great. Kim, you have any further comments?
At the Cove Commission meeting most recently, our members, our Mayor Pro-Champ Smotrich and Councilmember Wile unanimously with the other members approved a funding of $20,000 for two years as presented by the Riverside County Sheriff's Program. Our portion is based on the Cove Commission formula, which would be $4,800 for fiscal year 13, 14, and 14, 15, $2,400 per year. If you have any more questions, I'd be happy to answer them and thanks for hanging around.
Any questions down here?
I don't have any questions, but I have a comment because I was at that meeting and I, we all, we're so thrilled to have you speak and with this program. And I have to say that, that it was such a thrill to know that these kind of programs exist because they are so wonderful and especially for the people and the young people who might fall victim to the, the crime element around them. This is an opportunity to get involved with law enforcement. It is, it helps the community. It helps with their own self-esteem. And it gives a greater importance, I think, to the law enforcement officers with which they are working. Going out and seeing the risk that these law enforcement officers are taking is, is just invaluable. And it really sets a tone for the rest of their life, I think. And I'm just thrilled that we're able to be a part of it. And I think it's a real bargain for our community.
Okay. Sounds like it is. Any other comments from the audience? Can I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion that the... That the city approve funding for the Palm Desert Explorer Program. Is that what we're on?
Yes.
For fiscal years 2013, 2014, and 2014, 2015, in the amount of $4,800.
Who are you making that for, Ted?
I second.
Did you second? Please vote. After you've been here for about five hours.
You understand the Stanford order, David.
That's right.
Okay. We've got one more item to get through right now. And David Bryant is going to discuss the library issue. And David, you've got 28 seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the library board. The library staff recommended and the library advisory commission has approved a request to this council, to this library board of increasing the interlibrary loan fee that we charge to people using it. And that's where we go and receive other materials from other libraries that we don't personally own, from a dollar to $10. It's a $9 jump. We want to do that to recover partially the cost of this relatively boutique service. And since state funding for this vanished in December of 2011, we're really beginning to see the results of it. We've reduced staff. We would rather use staff more productively or at least generate revenue from this, again, relatively boutique service.
Okay. Any questions, David?
No, it's a small amount. It's a small amount of money. I think that, you know, we've been undercharging for a long time and so...
Ted, would you like to make a motion on this one?
Well, let's see. Do we have a, that the inter, that the interlibrary loans advisory commission recommends that the library board increase the current $1 interlibrary loan fee per transaction to $10 to begin to cover the cost of a service and to discourage its use by patrons who initiate requests but never pick up the items borrowed from their, from other libraries?
So does this apply just to those who don't pick them up or does this apply to everybody?
This would apply, Councilmember Hobart, this would apply to everyone coming in to use this service. We do about, we did 491 in the most recent year. We do about, we did 491 in the most recent year. It accounts for 16 1/100ths of 1% of what we do, but it still occupies a fair amount of staff time.
Excuse me, David, could you elaborate a little bit? Because we spoke about this, and you said that some of the books are very rare, some of the books you've had to go as far as Hong Kong to get. It takes a lot of staff time, between $20 and $30 are allocated for the staff time to retrieve and search out and pay for the mailing of all these items that people are requesting.
The system is basically based on trust. That is, that our library is trusted to receive materials from other libraries that other citizens or, in some cases, college students have paid for. We do borrow from university libraries, though that's in decline. They're becoming more possessive and less likely to loan. So we become the stewards of those materials while we have them in our possession. And in a few cases, those items have been lost, and they can be pricey. And then we have to go after the person initiating this interlibrary loan request to try to retrieve the funds to cover the invoice that we receive from another library. So it does put us at some risk.
Why don't we just cancel the service?
That would be your call as a library board. I would not oppose that.
Or at least cancel it for anything beyond the 48 states south of the border and east of Hawaii.
We would be fine with that.
I mean, to have to go to Hong Kong to get a book for somebody that comes in and says, I want that book, is absurd.
Yeah, it's a boutique service, as I describe it, and it really is something that we can, I think, no longer afford to provide.
Just don't leave Guam out of there, okay?
Right. But I think we should make note...
We haven't been to Guam yet, Steve.
I think we should make note of the fact that this is a service that a lot of libraries have discontinued.
They have.
Just because of the problems with the books not being returned or the expense of retrieving a book from someone or the expense of searching it out and obtaining the book.
Los Angeles Public Library is up to $25, and I think that will go higher in the years ahead.
Would you prefer to cancel the service entirely or limit the service to soliciting books from libraries within the continental United States?
Well, in fairness to the library advisory commission, to whom I brought this, let's limit it to the United States, to the lower 48. I think that's a very good way to put a limit on it, a sensible, enforceable limit on it.
Okay, so the motion then would be amended to add the limitation of soliciting books...
Only within the...
Only within the continental United States.
Thank you.
You okay with that amendment?
Isn't that for me to decide whether the amendment is satisfactory?
Do you want to include Hawaii?
And it is.
It is, it is up to you.
And it is satisfactory.
Are you including Hawaii or not Hawaii?
Yes.
Do I have a second down here?
Second.
Second, okay. Would you please vote?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, David. And we are going to recess into closed session. So all you thought you were going to be able to go home, closed session, and those items are...
Okay, the city council's in recess in a closed session pursuant to government code section 54956.8 to confer with its real property negotiator regarding property located at 42520 Bob Hope Drive. The council will also confer with its labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.8 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association.
We're in recess.